Caller two. Hi, Daniel.
Hi there.
Can you just mute your mic when you've got a second? Just so when we start the meeting, it's just easier for everyone to talk when everyone's mics are muted.
Absolutely. How do I? I'd like to speak and I'm not sure what the process is for that.
Okay, so when we get to the point of citizens' concerns, if it's about all of the items, any of the items on the agenda, then that will be brought up by Mayor Cox and/or Tim, the city council, the city council president. And at that point, we'll kind of, you know, just kind of raise your hand or, you know, something like that, so we know that you're ready to talk.
Thank you.
If it's not about anything on the agenda, then it would go at the bottom at number nine during considerations.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't think we got an answer from the other caller. But just to reiterate, if you can identify yourself, please do.
Caller two and caller three are the two people we're waiting to hear from on who you, who, we just want to just identify yourselves.
Jessica, can you hear me?
May I ask who that was? I guess they left.
No, I shut off your volume on my computer. Can you hear me, Jessica?
I can't, I just, I just don't know who you are, I'm so sorry.
This is Hobart, but I've had my mute, my mic, mic on my phone muted the whole time, so I just, I don't know.
Oh, okay, alright. Oh, awesome, okay, perfect. I just wanted to know, I was just trying to figure out, identify everyone on the call.
I've got to re-mute it now. And then do your guys.
Caller four, can you please let us know who you are and then mute your mic, please? Caller four? We're still waiting to see who caller four is. Caller four, can you let us know who you are and then just mute your mic, please?
They may not exactly know who caller four is, but if you're on the phone and you have not identified yourself, please do so for the record. And be aware that if you are making noise during the meeting, that people will have to be removed, especially with this number of people.
And I am able, I just, I am able to mute the callers too. So if it gets to a point where no one, where they're not, I can go ahead and mute them. I worked on that, figured that out.
Excellent, okay, perfect.
Sorry, everyone, nothing's working today. Okay. We have all of our counselors make it back. I see James, I see Carolyn.
Hard to tell.
I know, I know we got two.
Yeah, I see Carolyn and Tim, and then there's Lauren.
The Gary Burn.
Yeah. It is 5:31, but if you'd like, we could give them a few minutes.
I'm just gonna.
Hey, who's one of them?
This conference will now be recorded.
Give my minutes away, but I agree.
I know, I'm, I'm just in a rush to get through this so I can have dinner.
Yeah, I, we went to Bedford and back today, and then I decided to get sick right when I got home, so I will go as fast as I ever have, trust me. Unless I have to bow out, then Tim will take over for me, but.
We have Tim, we have Carolyn, so it looks like we're missing Greg.
I'm sure Greg is on the way. So we'll call this City of Port Orford.
Hold on, hold on, you got a letter. Oh, she already started the recording, my bad.
Yep, I started, we're good.
It didn't say we are recording. Good catch, James. All right, so we're gonna open up this October 21st, 2021, City of Port Orford Common Council Meeting at 5:32. I don't know of any, so.
Hey, Pat?
Yeah.
Gary just called me and he said he was having a heck of a time getting in, but he's still trying, and, uh, there's so many people on the screen, I don't even know if we're gonna see everybody.
Well, is there a limited amount of people that you can have in these? I don't know, that's why I was just asking, maybe, is that, or no?
We have 27, it says on the top of the screen, and my screen.
We should be able to have 100.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I haven't seen Gary yet, but he's trying to get in.
Okay, so I'll, I'll do a slow roll call. We have Tim Bogwitz, Carolyn LaRoche, Lauren Kessler, James Garrett, Greg Tidy, myself, Pat Cox, and most likely Gary Burns shortly. Uh, we'll start with a presentation to the council from TextMyGov. Thank you for, uh, thank you for the presentation. I'm not sure who you are with this many people here. And we like to keep our presentations to 15 minutes, so please keep that in mind. If you want to introduce yourself and tell us what you're about, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, it looks like you guys got a big group here, so we'll, we'll keep it brief for you all. But just as introductions, my name's Carson. I'm one of our technical experts here at TextMyGov. We've been working with Jessica over there, have presented our, our platform to her. Essentially, our platform is a two-way texting system for citizens to receive alerts from their city, as well as be able to text in and receive answers to questions or report issues. So if, if we have 15 minutes, I'd love to share our screen and, and be able to quickly kind of run everybody through that, how it looks like from a citizen's end, as well as what it looks like from the city side. I'm not sure if, if somebody can give me controls there to do that.
Let me see, hold on, because that would be me. Oh, I can be as a presenter, so I will make you a presenter, it looks like.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, you're good now.
Okay, great. And, and this is my first time using GoToMeeting, I'm, I'm usually a Zoom guy, but hopefully everybody's seen my screen now, it should be saying, "Let's get started", and then it's got a phone number here. Okay, okay, perfect. So if anybody would like to go ahead and text into this number, this is our demo site number. So this is just gives the citizens or anyone that's looking at the platform tonight an idea of how our platform works. So essentially, what we do is we purchase a local area code for our agencies. So for you guys, so we're in northern Utah, so that's why that's a 435 number, but for you all, we would look at purchasing like a 51 area code. And then essentially, from there, your citizens are able to text in and ask questions and get automated responses. So one thing I always want to make sure that's clear when I'm, I'm doing these presentations is nobody on the backend is having to manage a 24, 24/7 texting system. These are automated replies that we build in to, again, answer questions, give citizens the ability to report different issues, and then also receive alerts from their municipality. So again, if you have your cell phones there with you, that phone number on my screen, the 435-265-4446, you can go ahead and text "hi" to that. And then I've also created some examples before we started this meeting. I went on and grabbed some information from your guys' website. So I created a few examples, so with that number, you can also text "council meetings", so again, that's "council meetings", and then the other one is "pay ticket", and then the last one is "what to do", and I'll put those on the screen just so you guys can have those up there.
Nothing from nobody in Utah.
What's that, sorry?
Nothing, it was just someone in the public that.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll put these up here, but again, the examples you can put in there is "council meetings", "pay ticket", or the last one was "what to do". So each one of these, I, I just went on and created some examples, but if you text in "council meetings" and then you'll click on the link, it should go directly to your city's website, where you can see the upcoming agendas, previous meeting minutes, and things like that. So I just directly linked it back to the webpage. The other one was "paying a ticket", so if a citizen's looking to pay like a citation or a ticket that they've received, that'll go right to your guys' payment provider there that would link it right up to that. And the last thing was the "what to do", so this is more so like, you know, if, if citizens are like, you know, what, where, where do we go to stay and dine? Or if people visiting into the city, they're able to text in and say, you know, "what is there to do in Port Orford?", and it can have a reply kicked back with some information, and then I linked it to, you know, you guys had like an Enjoy Porterford page, and it's linked right back to that page there. So that's the texting inside. If anybody has not had a chance to text into that number, if you'd still like to, you know, let me know. But I'm now gonna kind of transition over to the notification side of our system. So that's the texting inside of our system. We also have pushing notifications out, so I'm gonna pull that over, so you guys can see that on my screen now. So this is the notification side of TextMyGov. This is the internal side, what staff members would see, like Jessica and the other employees that would be at the city. But essentially, we can create different groups to push out to your citizens. So you'll see in my groups, I have everything from like city alerts to events, to Main Street, to weather. We can create as many groups as you'd like, some agencies just have one or two groups. It's totally up to how you want to develop it, we can design it any way you'd like. And then how the citizens sign up for the groups is through the keyword. So they don't have to create a username or a password, they just simply text the keyword. So for city alerts, you'll see my keyword is "city1". So once they text "city1", that'll sign them up to start receiving alerts from your city. And then over here is where you can send those different alerts. So for example, if I said "city alerts", I would come in here, so "be advised", "heavy rainfall", "number the next", "24 hours", and you could say, you know, "City Hall will be on a two-hour open delay". And then once you've got your message in there, you just simply hit "send message", and that would go out to all the citizens that signed up for your city alerts. So that's the notification side of our system. The other thing that we do for this platform too is we provide what's called a media kit. So we have quite a few customers there in the state of Oregon. This is just one of our current customers there, this is Crestwell, Oregon. So we will, we will essentially, we, we have a full setup staff that helps you configure this system to your city, and then we'll train all the staff on how to use the system and create those replies to those different questions, as well as create those groups for pushing out information. So this is, as you see here, this is on Crestwell's website, but they have our widget placed there where it says "TextMyGov", skip a call, use your mobile phones, text messaging, text "hi" to the city, and then here's their local area code there, that the citizens can text in and get different answers to questions. And then we'll also provide flyers, so those flyers can be used around City Hall. You can post them on social media, wherever else you think would be helpful, but they can sign up to, that, that's how you'll be able to push out that they can sign up for those different alerts there too, from the city. I know you guys have other things on your agenda, so I wanted to keep it very, very high level. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take questions. Not sure if you guys wanted to open it up to questions or not, but I'm happy to answer any questions. But essentially, at a high level, that's, that's what I wanted to show tonight, and let you guys get back with your other meetings.
Thank you, counselors, do you have any questions? James?
I do. I have some familiarity with these systems, but is there a, a catch-all for unrecognized texts so that it could be evaluated to create more responses?
Yes, sir, so was that James talking, I think, is what it showed me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so James, so, so yes, so we also build an unrecognized text, because yes, we want to make sure that citizens are not just hitting a dead end. So for example, you'll see in mine, I have this unrecognized response. So this is where those unrecognized texts can drop into. But you'll see someone texted in "trash pickup" in my system, and I didn't have a reply to that. So we can set up an unrecognized text that can link to the internal search of your website, and then we can notify your staff too. So if they want to receive an email, when an unrecognized text come in, we can have them receive an email. That can have multiple staff on it, and then if they want to, they can come in and reply to those citizens and let them, you know, say, "Hey, what are you looking for, for trash pickup?". In this example, I would hit "reply" here, and then send that to them. And then we'll keep track of your top 10 unrecognized texts. So you'll see, this is, again, this is just my demo site, but this just shows my top 10 unrecognized texts in the demo site here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any, any other questions?
Well, I, I suppose, one thing we'd want to know is, what, what does the cost of this look like?
Yeah, yeah, great question. We, we did provide a price proposal to Jessica. We have you guys quoted at, so it includes, it's an à la carte system, so there's no limitations. We, we include everything that the system offers as well as functionality, but we have you guys quoted at $3,000 on an annual fee. And then our first year, we do have an initial setup cost, which is just 40% of that annual fee. So your first year is $4,200, with a total ongoing at $3,000. Our annual fees, we haven't increased our annual fees since existence of our company for our current customers. We only work with local government, so this, this system was cities and counties. We don't sell this to like the private sector or anything like that. We've got a, just over the past three years, we've signed on a little over 300 customers, again, just local government that uses it.
Awesome. Does this qualify as public notice for water outages?
Yes, yes, so you could send information out about like, you know, power outages, you know, water shut-offs, you know, emergency type alerts.
Right, but I mean like specifically boil water notices? Like we have to send out boil water notices when, when we have outages? Will that satisfy the OAW, or, yeah, OAWU?
The OHA, I mean.
You know, from my understanding, other agencies have used it to send out water, like water boil notices. I don't know for sure if that would, you know, I don't, I guess I, I'd have to check with my other municipalities that have done it that way. I don't know if it is sufficient enough to, you know, say, "Okay, this qualifies for, you know, being able to send that information out". I imagine it would, I don't know why it wouldn't.
Gotcha. It's a big seller for me personally, because that would be the, one of the biggest uses.
We need that everyone that would be on that line getting that notice. Yeah, my, yeah, the only thing I would wonder is if everyone on that line would get the notice. We would just have to make sure everyone then is signed up for it, on that particular street or whatever it is.
Right. And that's the thing, it would be optional, it would be nice if you just kind of added it to all the accounts, but you're good, but. All right, any other questions?
My big thing, one of the big things that I, I took with this one too, just so you guys know, is emergency management, because we can send out those notices. So this kind of fell in that whole presentation for emergency management with Gary Burns, is when I had this conversation with him, I was, that was one of the things that kind of first came to mind, actually, and I think I told you that, Pat, too, that this would kind of be good and kind of fit into that emergency management plan that we were talking about.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. I think we'll, uh, we'll talk with the council and see if we are gonna put it on next month's agenda again, or, and we'll notify you as soon as possible.
Yeah, if there's any questions, or anyone would like to see an individual demo, you know, please let us know. You know, this is our full-time jobs here, so we're happy to help any way we can. I, I did forget to mention the scheduled notifications here too. So I know notifications was big when we're talking with Jessica, so you can also schedule out notifications, right? So if you guys are gonna have closures of streets, or you're gonna be closed for holidays, things like that. But, but yeah, thank you all again for your time, I appreciate it. If there is any questions, Jessica's got our contact information, so feel free to reach out to us with any questions that you might have.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, enjoy the rest of your night. I think Jessica should be able to give you back, um, the screen share here, let's see. Sorry, guys, I'm new to this platform, so let me see if that closes us out here.
It looks like it says, "I can dismiss you", so I don't know, I can do that. There we go.
Okay, I stopped sharing my screen, there we go. Okay, thank you all, I'll enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Hey. All right, council, what do you think? Do you want to chase that out a little bit? It would work out to 250 bucks a month. John probably wants that for pumps and stuff, but it, it might be a good tool to, to use.
I think it'd be an excellent tool. We could send it out to water bills, because that's all the customers. As I go, hey, if you want to sign up for the service, you can text, text to sign up for the service, you know, and that's an easy way, right? To the water bill.
Yeah.
And yeah, I'd like to see it on the agenda for discussion and potentially progress.
Well, I mean, so we have the information, so would we come with a contract next month and have our discussion and decide then? I know we can glean more information in the meantime, but, but should we just put it on the agenda to make the decision? Do you think that'll give us enough time? We can always table it next month, too.
Yeah, we can always table it, but yeah, we should always plan to move ahead. That should be the ultimate expectation, so yeah. I'm sure Jessica can get us the.
Can you just come to us with a contract next month, and we'll decide that? Thank you.
Sure, not a problem.
I, I have a question, Pat.
Sure.
We spent a lot of money on a phone system a few years back. Have we explored that phone system can do exactly what this system can do via the telephone? Because I guarantee you, not everybody's gonna want text in Port Orford.
Right. Right, and that was a question actually that I asked them, because of obviously the population that we have, some of them are not obviously younger and like to text, or even have access to text, is kind of the conversation that I've had. And I'm not quite sure, because none of us are really kind of familiar with the phone system. We're just kind of starting to play with it a little bit more, and now actually that Levi's back, he was the one that helped set it up. So he's gonna kind of give us some classes and teach us to play with it and how to change some things that we need to. So I can ask Levi when we sit down and kind of go through the process, I can definitely ask him, because I'm not even that sure.
Well, it'd be good to look into that, because we paid a lot of money for the phone system, and if it does the same thing, but via telephone, maybe that would work, you know? Could save a few dollars, I don't know, I'm old school, sorry.
No, that's good, it's all about the few dollars. So, so we'll throw it on the agenda, we'll research that, and I have something to look into again, Jessica.
Yay!
Alrighty, so moving on to the consent calendar, could I get a motion for the approval of the September 16 minutes?
I motion to approve September 16 minutes. Second act.
Okay, have you, have you, anybody see anything they didn't like on those? Just verbatim minutes makes it kind of easy. Okay, hearing no questions, I'll, I'll call for the vote, Lauren. Yes, Lauren, yes. Tim?
Tim, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
James?
James, yes.
And Greg?
Greg, yes.
Okay, the minutes for September 23rd.
I would motion to approve the minutes for September 23rd.
Second act.
You want to have anything to say about those minutes? Okay, I'll call for the vote, James?
James, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes. Greg, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Tim?
Tim, yes.
And Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Okay, moving on to five citizen concerns. It looks like we have quite a few citizens, and GoToMeetings are cumbersome, so please speak up, you have three minutes to speak and state your name and address as well. Anyone for public comment about something on the agenda?
Uh, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, caller eight. Uh, you're starting to cut out now, caller eight.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great, sorry about that. This is Leela Thompson at 93165 Cemetery Loop.
Hi, Leela.
And I want, I wanted to speak regarding the use of the A-frame at Buffington Park. I wanted to just provide some backstory and current usage as a user of the park. I used the A-frame when I was in my teenage years with a Recreation Adventure Development for Youth Club that was run by Kathy Bowden. And the space was shared also with Mommy and Me programs and Wellnidd program. And so that was some of its use back in the 90s. I know that there are other people currently who would like to use the A-frame for various facilitation needs, and I would really support the city council in bringing A-frame back into full community use, and hope that they will support the Parks Commission in that vision. And that is my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Hawthorne had his hand up. I'm happy to see him.
All right, Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Chris Hawthorne, and I'm here coming to you through GoToMeeting. And I am the owner of two businesses, each having two Airbnbs. And I just want to disagree with what's been said regarding Airbnb guests in the local economy. Airbnb guests, I can verify contribute a lot to the Port Orford economy. And I, like many Airbnb owners, live in the community and spend the earnings and expenses of these accommodations here in Port Orford. I could also verify that three out of the four Airbnbs that I own eat out at least once a day. Those meals are eaten in Port Orford. I understand that there is a housing crisis that afflicts Port Orford in many communities, if not all, on the West Coast. And this is due to many different factors, including and besides the proliferation of vacation rentals. The, the unique problem we have here in Port Orford is there are limited high-end accommodations available to travelers that want to explore this part of the South Coast. So I just feel that there is a need to cater to travelers that have the means to pay for high-end accommodations, as well as to spend their money here. They will go to another town for their vacation if they can't find a place to stay. And I, as well as many others, have invested in providing accommodations for these travelers and want to see them spend. travelers and want to see them spend their money here in Port Orford and not in the next town. So I, um, I understand the need to curtail some of the, um, Airbnbs that are sprouting everywhere, but at the same time, I want to, uh, have you give careful consideration to the Airbnb that we do have and to, um, consider the ramifications for the town, to make a blanket rule that affects everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any other public comment?
Yes, I'd like to speak, uh, my name is Craig Rosenhour, and I have a home on 435th Street in Port Orford.
Yes.
Um, it seems like that you guys spent the whole half of the last meeting talking about all the holes in your water system, plugging the levee with pieces of grass and mud and pipes that leak out to nowhere and not into the pipes. And it seems like that the vacation rental owners are being blamed for your water problem, and it seems like that that's not fair. Uh, people are quoting people inaccurately, there's not enough low-income housing around, but there's no quality hotels that make people want to stay, and well, there's one hotel that's just closed all the time. So I'm wondering why you guys don't have any, uh, other thing than just blaming the vacation rental, saying that we don't spend enough money? Because I spent everything I had to build this vacation rental, and I spent the rest of money that I borrowed on my credit cards to furnish it with nice furnishings. And it's facing the ocean, it's not a place that would rent for 12, $1,500 like most places. Uh, there's only two people that in your, your city council that even were pro-vacation rentals, and that would be James and Tim. Everybody else made their opinions really well-known by saying they're making a lot of money, they're making a lot, she said it three times. We spent a lot of money, we gambled, we invested in your town based on when I went to Patty and said, "Do I need a permit?" And she said, "No." So now you guys are, you know, trying to regulate us by taking that we had away. You did it when you lowered my height restriction. My property is only one of three properties that can build 45 feet, because we voted out, we opted out of the Battle Rock overlay zone. So I had a right there, and you guys changed it without even notifying me. You lowered my property height that I can build to 35 feet. I didn't have any plans to build any height near that, but you guys are changing the value of my property by saying you're going to make me get a CUP, and then you're going to take it away if I ever go to sell my property. So I lose the value of the income that I worked so hard to get, when nobody told me that it was even available. I learned it on my own, I took the risk, I spent my money, I put my money in your bank in your town, I spent my money on food, I spent my money at all the stores, from Goldbeef's lumber, I shop everywhere in that town, the thricky nickel I bought furnishings there. So for you to say that there's people not spending money because of me is not correct. In Las Vegas, all the maids live in a little town called Perump, Nevada, and they drive to get to their work. In Santa Cruz, there's no affordable outlet.
Three-minute limit, I'm not trying to cut you off, but we do have a three-minute limit.
Well, I hope you guys do the right thing in this and consider the people that took gambles in your town and risked their, their livelihoods and their retirements to be there.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, Daniel DeSura, I saw you.
Yep. Yes, hi, thank you. Uh, I'm Daniel DeSura, I, uh, live in Langlois, and I own a home in Port Orford, and, uh, local small business owner, um, I run acupuncture business in Banden, and my wife has a farm here in Langlois, Valley Flora. Um, anyway, I'm just, I just wanted to thank you all for addressing the, I think is a very important topic about short-term rentals. Um, I don't own a short-term rental, I do have, uh, three long-term rentals. But I think it's an important, uh, issue for, for, for many reasons that have been discussed. Um, and I guess my question is, how can we make, you know, short-term rentals an asset to Port Orford? How can they be a win-win situation for, you know, the small, local business owners that operate them, but also for, for the community? Um, my idea would be, you know, first of all, getting them all above board. I know there's 42-something short-term rentals in Coos Bay, and only I think seven of them are even, you know, have licenses or pay any kind of taxes. So I think it'd be nice, I mean, I, I know that, uh, I voted every, I've lived here for 13 years, my wife is born and raised here, every time there is, uh, you know, a tax initiative on the ballot, I vote for it. Uh, we're obviously, uh, we need revenue in this county, and what if short-term rentals can be part of that solution? And, uh, and tax them in a way that bring, bring revenue to the community, help, help with the infrastructure of our water, um, you know, water issues? And, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's one of the things I wanted to mention, is just how that, how that could be, uh, a part of that. The other thing is that knowing that, um, there's a, you know, one of the concerns I have about short-term rentals is that there's a lot of out-of-state and out-of-country investors, uh, looking for short-term rentals. There's, there's, there's quite a buzz right now in the whole investor community. And I, that concerns me, I, I obviously wouldn't want Port Orford to be completely flooded with short-term rentals and make Port Orford just a, uh, you know, a vacation kind of town in the summer. Um, but is there a way that we can limit it to small business owners, meaning local people who live in, in this county? You know, that, that, that's part of the stipulation when they apply for a permit, is you have to, you have to live here, you have to spend your money here, like Chris Hawthorne and other folks that, that live here. Um, so those are the, those are the two things I wanted to address, because I know that just to do a blanket ban on it, I don't, I think that would backfire, I think, I think people do, I agree with, with, with Chris when he said that, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of money that is spent here. And, um, I live, uh, I mean, I work in, in Banden, and I, I, I do acupuncture, I see a lot of patients that, that just come here, um, for a month or two, they own their home, there's a second home, they own maybe three homes, uh, in other areas, and they just come to Banden for a month or two in the summer, and their houses sit vacant, you know? I mean, how is that really bringing revenue to the community when these houses are just vacant? Um, so I think that would probably continue to happen, these higher-end homes would be purchased by people who knows in Scottsdale, Arizona, for example, and they just want to come here during the hot months, and, and the rest of the time that, you know, tho- those, those, those houses are, are vacant and not really, you know, bringing in revenue for all the small businesses. So, anyway, thank you very much for addressing this, I hope that we can come to some, uh, solution and that these small, local business owner operators, uh, remain in business, but we limit it in some way or put some common sense, uh, limits on it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, we're going to move on then. Uh, departmental reports, um, a lot of information, let's try to keep it short, though. Uh, you did shorten them up, though, so, uh.
Mr. Cox, I had one comment, I, you cut me off.
All right, Mr. Cox, and see you there, Mr. Lott, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to thank the council and planning commission to be looking at this important issue, because I really don't think, and I really agree with what Chris and Craig had to say, it's not an issue. And, and also, uh, the comment just made by the prior speaker, it, it's really not, Daniel, it's really not an issue about not having vacation rentals. I think we have pretty responsible vacation rentals in town, and they do contribute to our, our local economy. I think the real question is, do we have the right number of vacation rentals? This is the question all the local, you know, the coastal communities of Oregon are dealing with. How do we find the right number that meets the economic needs of our local economy and businesses without risking, uh, running out of water during our driest months? Because we know that customers of vacation rentals, the highest peak demand is during our lowest supply of raw water. And how do we do this without harming the livability of our community? Because we know vacation rentals are businesses that are operating within residential neighborhoods. Uh, they are lodging businesses. And so how do we find that balance? To me, I think we're close to it right now. And that's why I don't think we should ban vacation rentals, but we should seriously consider how many do we want and do we have enough? We have a local economy that's very healthy, restaurants are experiencing very strong sales, house construction's booming, real estate prices are way up. Um, and I think by limiting the number of vacation rentals will not harm this local economy, and it will protect the livability of the community, and the, and the existing vacation rental owners will probably benefit because of supply and demand. So I see it on that side. Um, but we really do, the real issue around vacation rentals is about, do we have enough water during our driest months to support additional vacation rentals? I want to thank John and the public work staff, you guys have done tremendous efforts on trying to keep the water system afloat, so I greatly appreciate John and the public works for working so hard to keep the water going. But you know, if you look at the vacation rentals listed on Airbnb, the average, uh, number, uh, of customers is 5.3, which, or 5.1, which is three times larger than the average household, uh, in, in the city of Port Orford. We know vacation rentals do increase on-street traffic, uh, parking, we have no off-street parking requirements, which I think the city council and the city needs to look at. Um, and we also know that some vacation rentals restrict things like, uh, public projects, uh, trails, uh, tax requirements, licensing requirements, so I think these things we need to consider. And we also know that it impacts affordable housing, and we know we have a shortage of workforce, because we have restaurants, uh, that locally can't be open during some times of the day, because we don't have adequate housing to meet their needs. My last com- My last comment is, if we look at other coastal communities that have limited vacation rentals, not ban them, allow that right mix. Uh, a city like Yaha's, their economy is booming, it's strong, uh, and they've been able to manage their limited water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment before we move on to departmental reports? Uh, Mr. DeSura, uh, you're muted for one, but you were pretty close on your three minutes before, so please, please.
I thought, I thought the rule, I, when I read the rules, that you can make two comments total after everyone has spoken, I was.
Okay, go ahead then, yeah, I'm not going to split the hairs on the rules for you, because obviously he did not want a little more than me, go, go ahead, yeah.
That's okay, I just, I appreciated what Stephen said, and he brought up some other points, and, uh, I, I just, I just wanted to know if, uh, you know, if this idea I had about taxing the, uh, vacation rentals more in a way that provided funding to repair the water, I thought, I, my understanding of the water, there's, we're hemminging about 40, something like 40%. What if, what if we use that revenue to actually fix the water, so the water isn't a, a concern? And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we absolutely have an affordability crisis, and that is, um, something that I, I kind of think is a different, you know, it's a different, not a different topic, but I don't think, uh, limiting vacation rentals so much is going to solve that, knowing that a lot of these vacation rentals are typically more on the higher end, that would garner higher, higher rents, and that, um, I, I hope that we can solve an affordability crisis, it's, it's true, there's, there's a, the major problem there, and, um, maybe there could be differences there, or grants or other regulations that are, are, you know, I don't know, permitting lifting, that people could be more multifamily, or, I'm, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to address that, that affordability crisis is certainly, that I'm concerned about as well, so thank you very much.
You off earlier, did you want, do you, you want another couple minutes, too? I hate to cut people off.
Yes, please. Um, if there's a 40% loss of water in your system, how is it fall on the backs of vacation rental owners? And I would venture to say that my water bills are in line with what your city council members' water bills are, we don't waste water, we, we took property that was told to be a teardown and made it into something nice, it was a blight on your city's landscape. And if there's not a amount of homes available for people, you know, what do they do in Santa Cruz? That's why everything costs a million dollars. I'm not trying to capitalize on the value of the properties in Port Orford. And I live in Grants Pass, so one of the people proposed that I would just lose out. I, I drove out there a hundred, a hundred times to remodel my place and spent all my money, and sometimes there was no hotels available, I had to camp in an empty house that was a teardown, and I made do. And so why don't you go after the hotel owner that's closed all the time? She doesn't take any customers in, and tell her that you're going to convert it into low-income housing, like you did with the, the senior home, which is a beautiful thing, and then you can put people in the hotel rooms and make little mini kitchenettes. I can't solve your guys' water problem, but you guys don't seem to have a plan for that, so overburdening me, why don't you go after the landlords? Like James said, if, if, if they're not a business, what is a business? If I live in, uh, New Mexico and I bought a place in Port Orford and I rented out and I'm never there, why aren't you taxing them? All of Vicosa's people are paying TLT tax. Nobody's thanked us for that, but you guys take the money and spend it while you accuse us of taking away from the town. So, and I appreciate what you guys do volunteering to help the town be better, and I get that's your, 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 um, main objective, and so I hope that the decisions you make, you know, some of these things stand out, and you're able to make the best decision for the people involved. But blaming one group on a problem that's been there since the five years ago, when I first had put in your town, there, I was told there was a water problem. Some properties don't get pressure, some properties don't have it, so, um, I don't mind paying, but, but where's my TLT tax going? Does anybody have any answer for that?
Uh, this is just public comment, we're not trying to avoid anything, it's just the process of it, so I appreciate your comment. It's not.
Thank you very much, everyone, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Cox, um, since there is a second round of comments, this is Leela Thompson, could I also comment some more time?
Sure, go right ahead.
Um, I am an owner of an Airbnb also in Port Orford, and just so you know, not everybody is an outside investor, as many are suspicious of, but, um, what I would say is to also, uh, parallel the comments that the home we have, we need to pay a mortgage on, and it was a family circumstance issue to where, um, basically someone cannot really afford rent at what the mortgage is. And so the Airbnb is really the only way for us to pay the mortgage. Um, so I would just hope everyone can kind of take perspective on some of these Airbnbs, because their circumstances are all very different. And, um, the, the, the basic idea is that I rent, actually, it's a long, complicated story, but it was very hard to find a place, so I completely understand the shortage of housing. Um, most of the things that we looked at were rotten and moldy for renting, or too expensive. And the place that we have for an Airbnb would be one of those too expensive places. So you see, there's no middle ground, it's really complicated, so I just hope you understand the perspective that many of these Airbnb, um, owners are coming from. And I have a guidebook that sends everyone to local businesses, they write back and say, "We totally enjoyed Redfish, we loved the crazy Norwegian tacos, we went out on the South Coast kayaking tour, uh, we did all of our grocery shopping on Mondays and Tuesdays at the store, because restaurants aren't open." I mean, there's a lot of money still being spent by the people coming into these places. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One quick second comment, Pat, I, I think Craig and, and Leela are absolutely right, I, I hope the city council doesn't think of banning the existing vacation rentals, I think they contribute to our local economy. What I think we need to think about is the demand side on water. I don't want John to kill poor John and his staff. You know, we're not going to get more water in the reservoir, we, we have to think about the reality of limited water, like other, you know, coastal communities in Oregon are dealing with. So I hope it's not, this discussion's not about how to harm the existing vacation rentals, the question is, can we really have more demand on our water system? And especially during our driest summer months, based on vacation rentals, not for local residents, not for local businesses, and do we have the ability to fight a fire if we need one in, in that period? So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jessica, can you look into the rule about the follow-up talking? Because it sure seems a lot like a conversation to me when we're able to do that, so, um, I just need to clarify that. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm not going to ask it again. Moving on to public works, John, what do you got?
All right, how's it going, everybody?
PG.
So, you saw my report, we'll just run through it really quick. We'll just run through it really quick. Starting at the top, Hubbard's raw water pump. We've got all the parts and we've started that installation. Dredging's the same place we're at. We're looking for quotes and permitting, which is a long, evolved. Jessica's been working on that. It's probably not going to happen this year. We've got the dam leakage. Simble West was down a couple of times this month. We went through the elevations, the dimensions. There's a temporary fix engineered and I believe we're looking at mid-December before we get installed, correct? So hopefully that'll be summed up and by December we'll have the Hubbard's pump completely done and that'll get Hubbard's kind of off the checklist. Moving to the water treatment plant, let's see, we've got all the electrical components for the finished water pump. It's still on order. We haven't received it yet. Reese was down a couple of times this week. And we've went through the process it's going to take to get it installed. And we're going to have to shut the plant down for a day to be able to get the bucket rebuilt and the new heaters installed. And then hopefully get a contractor in to do the piping configuration to be able to install this new pump. And then we'll order the second one once we have the newer hybrid pump in place. But at the same time, we're going to go ahead and do the electrical work for both buckets. So both pumps will be ready to run when we do complete that. We still have a pressure relief valve there. We didn't get to it this week. We were hoping to, but we just didn't make it. So that one's just kind of sitting on the back burner for right now. Coast Guard Hill Pump Station, I've talked to the current local vendor. Sounds like we've got some dry scene in, but we're not finalized yet on that. We still need to hunt down probably two more quotes. I would throw an estimate out of probably one hundred K to one fifty for the complete replacement, not knowing what the contractor cost will be on that. So let's see what's next. Main branch line leakage. We did kill a couple of big leaks this last month. We actually killed a couple of big leaks this month. Our water making abilities have increased significantly. So those were probably out there for a long period of time, maybe month, I don't know, two months. Anyway, and we've got some, you know, somebody said something about right-of-way, permitted right-of-way usage. And I just want to bring this up as a topic because I, I know we have a practice now and there's places where people are parking their right-of-way and fences are out to the property lines so they can't park in their driveways. I get that. But going forward, we have a person on Pinehurst that is pretty much made a permanent parking area out on the right-of-way over the top of the water and sewer, well, water anyway, not sewer because sewers in the road for a very large RV. No permit. The conversation I had with referred to it happening was we're just spreading gravel to keep the water runoff. Two weeks later, forty-foot RV shows up, parked there. So I'm going to throw it at the council to put this on agenda for next month. And we've got to do something. If there's a water main burst in that area, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar RV parked over the top of it. How do we fix it? So we've got to get a handle on the right-of-way stuff where, especially where there's water mains and utilities, right? Skipping on to water leaks, you can see what we had there. We had several at the Coast Guard Pump Station. We had Doug Johnson Lane, Jefferson Pump Station again, and we had a small one down at the port. It was quick and fixed. New services, we need a couple. We still got, I think, two or three pending. I know I got at least two. There might be three. I'm not sure. I've kind of lost track. We've had a lot of issues this month that kind of set me back on marching forward. We actually went backwards quite a bit. We did some meter swaps. We did, okay. So grit system, we did get some parts today. So hopefully we're getting ready to tear back into that. Idaho lift station, we're going to have to do something there really, really soon. We had lots of issues with it starting on Sunday and we just kind of got it back in operation as of today. That's, it's fairly consistent. Blower number two, as stated here, we will switch it over and we'll find out whether that thing's going to be operable or not sometime this month. And then pending influent meter, I'm going to touch on this one here because this is a pretty important meter and the new wastewater treatment plant operator, who is really smart, very educated and sharp, easy to get along with, can't say enough positive stuff about her. She's, she's got some real concerns with this and we have a new N DPS permit that came out. It's in public review right now until, shoot, eleven, eleven-five, I think will be the last. That permit's going to require additional treatment, additional testing, and some things that we haven't been doing. And there's going to be some cost to the city for that for sure. I don't know what those costs are yet because I don't know what the requirement, what the cost is for the additional testing the DEQ is going to require from us. Hopefully I'll have that nailed down here in the next couple of weeks. But for some reason, they've changed our permit with some additional testing. Some of it we can't do without buying equipment. So there'll be cost for buying equipment. And then I'll look at the cost to see whether it's cheaper just to let McCowen do it in Coos Bay or if it's something that we should purchase the equipment and we can do them at the lab onsite. That's to be determined. There's more to follow on that because I just don't have all the details I need right now. But that, that meter, somehow we've gotten away with not having it for many years and it is crucial to the new testing. Knowing your influent versus your effluent is pretty important to the new permit. So that is a kind of a major undertaking because that's on the main influent line. And so somehow we've got to figure out how to get around everything coming into the plant while we do this changeout. And this changeout is not something that can be done in an hour. So we'll have to give a DEQ, find out if we can waste over to our pond or if we're going to have to do a loop around or if we can install another meter down, down the line or up the line, you know, maybe leave the old meter in place as it is now. I just, I don't know. So there's, there's more to follow, but that's kind of a major deal with the DEQ and the permit. Let's see. Moving out of wastewater, basic summertime maintenance, the summertime hire has been, she's done for the season. So it's back to us to clean in the bathrooms and we'll take care of that. We're still working on our annual fire hydrate maintenance. We've got a long ways to go on that. I think we're done with the ODOT conflict list. I'm still kind of waiting a follow-up email to see if there's anything else out there that I'm sure there'll be something that shows up that's in the way that they're going to want moved at last minute. But that job was supposed to be bid sometime this month and we should know who the players are by November or so, and that's supposed to start the summer here sometime. There'll be lots of growing page with that. CE contacted me. They've got a bunch of power poles to move and locates to do for their new lighting system that ODOT's going to put in for crosswalks and whatnot. And they're all in that main sidewalk on the west side of the highway, which is where our eight-inch runs all the way down that highway. So that's going to be somewhat troublesome, but we'll do what we can to work with them and hopefully we can make some moves to, to solve the issues on conflicts. Battle Rock, let's move into parks real quick. Battle Rock, so the park benches down there are donated, I was told, and some of them have, what do you call it, plaques to the people that were died or injured or what have you. We've had to remove two of them, well, one of them right now. The other one really needs to come down. It's rotten. So I don't know who's responsible or who could possibly maybe build a couple more and we could remove those honorary plaques off and install them on new benches. Maybe somebody's got thoughts on that and they can kind of let me know what to do. Otherwise they just need to come out of there or somebody gets hurt.
I'll volunteer to do that, John.
Really?
Yeah, I've done that. Kathy and I have built other benches near where the Redfish. I'll volunteer and get some benches taken care of for that area for you.
Awesome. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that.
We'll connect.
We don't do carpentry very well. Let's see, still pending continue sometime. So I'm going to hold off and do any more work on, on the playground equipment there because it sounds like the park commission is really rolling. They've got some new people and they're going to take care of it for me, which, thank you. And then we had a bunch of equipment stuff that we did. We had break stooling out and all kinds of stuff on the back of your truck, whatever to get everything back together. Our monthly runs were pretty successful. We didn't really have anything that went down. The one thing we do need to do, and I'm going to get you, I'll get Jessica Price on it, is we need to get the Coast Guard Hill generator back on auto run. So we have a program and an auto run on the wastewater treatment plant. So it fires every Tuesday and runs its twenty-minute cycle and we don't have to do anything. Coast Guard Hill, I guess the PLC that did the call for that went out and somebody didn't want to spend the money to get that put back on auto run, but I think it's very important because there's, you know, weeks where we're just too busy to go down there and sit for twenty minutes or half an hour while it's running. So I'm going to try to get that fixed and back on auto run. And then there's a few other high-priority lift stations that really need some generators to be able to pump sewage to the plant because the plant has a generator, but none of the lift stations do. So yeah, I don't, that kind of threw me for a loop there. And I figured out, other than that, we're moving forward. We're fixing stuff and if you've got any questions, I'll answer them.
Do we have a classifier for the grit system, John? Is the classifier working now?
We did make the classifier work, but until we can get the grit system to actually pump the grit to the classifier, yeah, we're kind of on hold. The parks came in today to be able to take that rest of the grit system apart. And then we'll know hopefully by next council meeting whether it's solvable or not. I did have a conversation with Smith and Lovelace this week on a new system because I saw the price of the first quoted one and they're quite a bit cheaper. So I'm trying to get some sort of a quote out of them for a new grit system.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Well, very, very detailed report, John. Thank you. You're welcome. Ahead of us though, so these reports are where we're going to pick up a little bit of time. Finance, does anybody have any questions for Jessica in finance? Is there anything in finance that you'd like to pour in out to us other than what you gave us, Jessica?
Let me see. Well, there's a few different things that we sent the, we're sending the information for the refund or not, for the grant basically for the Ocean View paving. So that should be coming in shortly. It takes a little while. It's like forty-five days for us to get the funding back that was sent in. We worked on that. The other big thing is we have a new officer that started. So we now have, we have four officers plus a part-time traffic person. And I just want to kind of point out that the part-time traffic person is more than paying, more than, you know, kind of going through and being able to make sure that we still, you know, create a good, you know, just have the, the funding for everyone else. So he's been really, really good. And I really wanted him there for the school, especially during school zone times and stuff. They have something coming up next week. I guess they're doing a little parade for Halloween. So I wanted to make sure that the officers are out there obviously too during that timeframe to make sure they can cross the street and all that fun things right in front of the school. So, but otherwise it was, you know, it's just kind of everything else. American Legion Hall, you know, they're still submitting their stuff. We have property taxes revenue is going to be coming in. The property tax monies will start to come in in October and November. So that's another thing. But that's pretty much it. The other biggest thing, I think, you know, is just we've been able to kind of hone in on the sewer and the utility bills and all that stuff and kind of get a lot of that stuff cleaned up for the audit and then also going forward. So that's kind of the other big thing.
Great. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Jessica. Let's see, planning? We got anything from planning? Other than the right-of-way request?
I know that they are having that meeting coming up with regards to the, the hearing for the, the height stuff. So let's just put that out there. I know that's coming up. So I think that's November second, just so everyone's aware.
Okay, moving on, Leah's on reports then. James, anything from fire?
I talked to Dave a few weeks ago and nothing is going on unusual. I kind of let him know to keep me posted if, if something of interest comes up. For the most part, it's all pretty basic. They're just maintaining the status quo.
Thank you. Okay, down at the port, we dropped the ask for the phase one funding of the Build Back Better grant. And we're hopeful with that. And we also started on some, some infrastructure funding through Connect Oregon that we're working on. So we're pretty busy down here and this next month is going to let us know a lot about the port and the city's future. So it's real exciting. Lauren?
I'll keep it short, Mayor Cox. We are up in our school system to two hundred and twenty-seven students. Most there's been in a while. And just to make it very brief, the track at the high school and the steps going down are complete and we will be able to actually use the track this year. So that's all for me.
Awesome. Steps down to the track? They don't, just kidding. All right.
They did have, they did have steps, but somebody fell through them. So we just, it was decided that maybe for a safety thing.
I guess. Not that hard. But, okay. Tim, TLT?
TLT, Jessica and I spoke regarding TLT and we'll be working together to get the TLT committee up to speed for the January grants. I'll keep it short and sweet too because we're already an hour into our two-hour meeting.
Are you? Carolyn, what do you got from watershed?
Linda Tar is here. She can give you an update.
Hi, thanks you guys. I'll keep it really quick. Once again, we're just hoping that the city administration can have the capacity to accept the Forest Management Plan grant. We are going to change the scope of work on the outreach for that. We had planned to use the kiosk at the co-op, but we understand that's going to be used for bicycle information. So we are proposing a brochure for the city around, education around the watershed, especially outside in the urban growth boundary, the properties that neighbor the watershed to help protect the source water. We also discussed the possibility of using some TLT funds to educate visitors about conservation. Maybe a brochure that could go in motel rooms and vacation rentals, letting people know that just because it's Oregon, that doesn't mean we have an endless supply of water and asking people to conserve. And those are the high points.
All right. Thank you, Linda. We'll get that done.
Okay.
All right. So Counselor Tidy, what do you have from parks? Sounds like parks.
Yeah, parks, we have been busy. It looks like we have three people for no permit from the Parks Commission this evening, which would be amazing. They put us at seven. So that would give us, and really looking forward. It seems really positive when we did the interviews with the prospective, you know, parks commissioners. They all brought in different parts to the parks. Funding is going forward with the playground improvement. And then during this evening, the Parks, Parks Head will be on for the, help discuss about the apron later on. So Brian will be here later to help us out with that.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. All right. So I skipped over. Gary, anything new from emergency management or health?
We've got some new educational information and we're going to go through that this weekend and get a plan going for doing a school program and so we're just plugging along.
Great. Okay. I don't think I missed anything there. So we'll move on to old business. A water infrastructure state of emergency ending or adjusting water restrictions?
I would make a motion that we end the emergency. Water restrictions in Port Orford.
I would second that motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I say something? John and I had talked and John, please chime in. What we thought would be a good idea if the council likes is being able to. End everything, but continue the one restriction of the new installs of the new, of, until at least we get a little bit further. John, I know that you and I talked about this.
Yeah, I agree. Didn't we do that for 60 days?
We did. So that's why we can end what we're thinking is John, you know what, John, you go ahead because you were the one that, we were the ones that talked about this.
Well, uh, Tim, just, yeah, I don't know. I'm sure Shayla will correct us if we're wrong here, but. Um, I don't know how we extend it, but until the dredging of dams complete, we have the, the storage. For water back and we have the treatment, finished water treatment pumps replaced and we can ramp up through our tracer study. We will be exactly in the same situation next summer if it's a dry summer. So I know we, we were committed by Shayla that the ones that were paid and up to date, we needed to follow through with those. And we, and we totally plan on doing that. But I just don't know where we're at if we keep adding. I mean, we're up around 20. Who knows what will come at us? I know there's two or three more on the books and. You know, there's a lot of properties out there that are selling and it's going to impact us.
Okay, I'll uh, I'll let Shayla, I'll go to Shayla with this because we'll follow her guidance, obviously.
You're going to need to go through a more formal process to extend moratorium out for new developments. Beyond what you're doing. Um, you're gonna, I mean, essentially you're going to be. Clamping down on any new development in Port Orford if you're not going to allow water hookups. And I think that you're going to have to go through a hearing process and you're going to have to give notice to DLCD and frankly. I mean, I don't want to segue into your vacation rental moratorium, but it's going to be the same process with the two of them. If you're going to go through an extended moratorium.
And is there any way to temporarily roll this over until we get a little ahead of the game? Or is it?
Frankly. Yeah, I mean, I. I think that when you, I mean, you're looking at extending it for another year if you're wanting to, to undergo all these improvements. And I just don't think it's possible to do that without going through a more official process.
Alright.
Sorry, Lauren, go ahead. Do we, are we over the water crisis? Are we, are, do we have water filling up in the containment area like we should? I mean. Well, do we have the water that we're, weren't getting or weren't, weren't containing anymore?
So the dam is being fixed. We're just working on that kind of fix still. Like obviously engineering fans take time and stuff like that. So. Like I, like John had said, they were just here doing final measurements and I think they said they should have everything done mid-December. So that's, that is a big portion of it, obviously. But I think a concern is obviously is also pressure too, you know, so if we add more people on Coast Guard Hill or. Any of those things because we also have to keep up the fire standards too. So it's kind of, you know, a double ed. It's kind of everything. It's, that's kind of where we were talking about it with John and I. But you know, I mean, if we have to, I think.
I mean, even right now, yes, we, we got water in the reservoir, but we haven't ran for two days. We're down seeing the tank. We'll be down by four, we'll probably be at 14 in the morning, maybe a little bit lower. And if the water doesn't clear up, we can't make water. Make sense? So even though we have water, it has to be clean enough to be able to make water to put to the tank. So right now we're kind of uh, we're in the danger zone because we're at, going to be at 14 feet in the morning. But we couldn't run today and we couldn't run yesterday and that really shot us in the foot.
So, so my question to Shayla was, how many days did we do that? Did we do a 60 day when we originally did this last month?
I believe so.
Yes, we did it to November 1st.
Well, November 1st is right here right now. So basically that's done. So. I guess at that point then my motion stands because it looks like we need to go through a whole entire different process. To do what you guys are asking us to do.
One thing we might be able to do for some protection is set a policy that once the reservoir gets down to a certain level, we automatically go into a, a conservation plan. So we don't have to wait for two weeks for a meeting or have anything. It could be preset up. So we could be ahead of the game and just make that number a little higher to be safe. Can we make a policy like that, Shayla?
You can, and that would. Sort of do away with the necessar- necessity of all these actions of. Putting moratoriums in place. If you had an actual policy that you could follow. It would be a better course of action than just flat. Cutting off all hookups for a period of time.
Now, I have a question. Would it be a policy or like an ordinance or a, you know, a some, or a chart, something like that? Or would it be more of a policy?
Just a resolution.
You'd probably put an actual ordinance in place, I would think.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, got it.
So that is an out for this conversation of, you, you know, we might not have time for all those improvements, but we can make that adjustments to protect ourselves. Next summer and we don't have to make that number that, that end all, we don't have any water left. We can be a little conservative on it and uh. Cause I don't really want to get this uh, you know, you can hear that we're already getting uh. A community that's feeling like we're trying to shut down everything new and, and business. And I don't, I think that's the last thing we want, but we also want to conserve our, our water. But it sounds like we couldn't even continue on the moratorium. If we wanted to with the reasoning we have right now. And if we did, it would have to be an all or nothing thing, right Shayla? You can't say new people can't have it, but these people can, can wash their cars.
No.
I'm saying if we open up the moratorium except for new users, isn't that? Discriminating against the new users since it's not a moratorium anymore? Or am I just overthinking it?
I, I'm not following the logic. I don't know how you say that new users can do X and old users can do Y. I don't, I don't think you can do that.
That's, that's, you answered my question. Thank you.
So it sounds like to me, we, we have a plan. Uh, over, over the course of our wet season, we can, we can put in, we can develop an ordinance. And put it in place so that certain precautions automatically occur and are publicized to the public. Based on certain conditions that occur during, during our dry season in order to. Stay a step ahead of, of hitting critical points in our, in our water system. Um, so I would suggest that we continue with development. Um. You know, developing that. I looked up a few other cities that have such things so we could potentially copy one of theirs and uh. Uh, you know, make some tailoring to suit us. Um, as far as our current motion on the table, it almost seems like to me, maybe we should just uh, dismiss the motion. And let the expiration of our 60 days occur uh, here in a week or so. Um, and give our water system that extra week of conservation for them to get caught up. Because even though we have rain and therefore we have water, as it's been explained, the water's not clear enough to uh, process. So. That's my thinking is just give them the extra week to get the water flow going.
Good idea.
Well, if anyway, if you gentlemen would like to withdraw your motions, then that would answer that. But they can also stick too, and I can call for the vote right now. It's a.
But there is a lot of matter to what councillor said too.
I don't have a problem with withdrawing my motion. It's only nine days and it's going to rain for nine days. So I understand. Trust me, I understand 100% what John's going through. They've been going through this for years. Anytime it rains, the turbidity goes up and. You can't make water. So I'm more concerned about the legalities that Shayla spoke of earlier, you know? But I'm glad to withdraw my motion and allow uh. The water restrictions to go on for nine more days. But. I just thought it would be something to clean up at this meeting. Um, but if it expires in nine days automatically, so be it.
What I can do is actually include a notice in with everyone's utility bills this month. So everyone is aware if that's something that we would like to do.
I, if we're legally bound. Are we legally bound to do that or we just let it expire?
No, she was just saying that she would put a note in the billing that says the water restrictions have been lifted.
Right.
I, I don't have, unless it was in the packet and I missed it. I don't have what you adopted in front of you. If it has a natural expiration date, then you don't need to do anything.
Okay. It says November 1st.
Expiration date, so. But I, I don't want to guess, but.
It was November 1st. Yeah, it was for November 1st was the expiration date.
60 days, yeah.
Okay, well, it sounds like uh, we're good on that. Anybody speak up if you don't agree?
Uh, so just to confirm it, it sounds like Tim is rescinding the motion and I'm rescinding my second.
Correct.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to the moratorium on vacation rentals. Uh. The first thing I'll say about that is uh, a lot of the comments we have are, you know, are putting us. Making us look like we're just shutting it down. And in my opinion, the moratorium was so we could manage or control this growth and get a handle on this. No one on the council said we want to obliterate it, that we want it to go away. We, we want to promote business. We want to promote new people in town. But we just want to have a good balance. And it's not a, it's not like Port Orford is the only place to address this problem. All up and down the coast, they're, they're reviewing this issue. So in my opinion, we were just pumping the brakes a little bit so we could control it or manage it before it got out of control. Tim, what do you got?
So Pat, I would motion to table vacation rentals until we can meet with planning and give them direction as to what we want to see.
I would second that motion.
Okay, um.
Well, the reason I say that, Pat, is because, I mean, we've gotten this discussion. Twice or three times already and we're just not going to get anywhere. As a matter of fact. I would like to see each councillor come to that meeting with. Five points. And if you guys don't think five points is enough, 10 points, that they would like to see in this vacation rental. Um. Discussion. And then we discuss that with planning, decide what we want out of those bullet points and give planning the proper. Um. Give them the proper information that they need to make a decision to come back to us with some answers.
Yep, that's exactly. They need a list of things to address and then a presentation.
Okay, um.
Carolyn.
Carolyn? Mayor Cox, Caroline has her hand up.
There was a question when we had the meeting on this that. We needed to ask Shayla if it had to go to planning. If that was a planning issue or if it was just something the council did.
So the council itself can do a moratorium, but there is a process that you go through that does involve at least your planning department. Because you have to send a letter to DLCD 45 days before your final hearing and adopting a moratorium. So. At the very least, your city planner has to be involved in this process. And I did have a conversation with her today and, and let her know that this could be coming down the, the pipe for her. So. She is aware and prepared to do this if need be, but there, there is a hearing process that would, you would have to go through and it could be done at the council level or the planning commissioner level.
Most cities that are involving this, they are involving their uh, planning councils, especially when it comes, because some of these ordinances that we may or may not put in place. Have to do in Shayla, I think, said this last meeting. Uh, it has to do with land use, which has to come through the uh, the planning council if I remember correctly.
Right. So your, your actual code that you might decide to adopt as it's relevant to. Um, vacation rentals would generally go through your planning department because it is land use. But that's. That's different than a moratorium. What a moratorium does is pauses and says, we're not going to allow any more of these. While we figure out the code provisions that are going to be applicable to it. But. You know, both of those things take time and hearings and notices that are required for your planning department to send out.
Right. But now the question on the table is if we want to table it or not. So uh, and, and could you repeat your motion, Tim? You want to table it till we can have a workshop or?
Well, we, we had spoken prior meetings about getting together with planning to discuss this issue. And I know planning discussed it in their last meeting briefly saying that they thought it was coming down the pipes towards them. So my motion would be to table the vacation rental. Um, until we can send it or till we can meet with planning and give them clear direction as to what we want. Because we can send it to them and they might come back with something we don't want or something we do want. We don't know. But if we give them clear direction, we got a better chance of getting this thing done faster rather than it dragging out. Of course, we got to follow what Shayla said with the, you know, the 45 days and the posting and all that information. But like you said earlier, we're not here to end. Vacation rentals. We're here to find out what the happy number is, really.
So we have to give them, no, like, so we're, we have, we're the ones that have to give them the clear direction. So we have to have a meeting between ourselves before we have a meeting with planning and that's. When is that time? I mean, it, that's. Uh, but okay, now there's a motion on the table. I just.
Okay, so, so, so I guess I could change my motion. My motion. I could rescind my original motion and say that we should meet as a council. We should each come with five to seven bullet points that we'd like to see in a vacation rental. Um, ordinance and then we'll meet, we'll discuss it, we'll come up with what we want to send to planning, send it to planning, let them do their magic. They've been very good about what they do. Uh. We're fortunate to have who we are. There's uh, Shayla again, Pat. I don't know if you.
Just table it.
So I think, I think we're, we're blending a process and maybe, maybe that blending is intentional, maybe it's not. So a moratorium is something that can happen a little quicker than an actual adoption of a vacation rental code. What a moratorium does is essentially adopt findings that says we have this issue. And it's going to be detrimental to the public if we don't stop these things right now. While we figure out how we're going to regulate them through the land use process. And so the moratorium is something that can go in place a little quicker because I will tell you. You have your meeting at planning, planning's going to develop a code, they're going to have hearings. As fast as we would like to get that done, it's not a quick process.
So.
And in the meantime, vacation rentals are pretty open in Port Orford.
So we were headed there and that's what you had suggested two meetings ago. And Lauren actually made a motion to go there and then it got, I don't know how it ended up that. We didn't do it, but that's where we were headed last meeting. So. We were going to do exactly what you're saying, but it didn't end up that way.
Was Shayla, were you not at the last meeting, were you?
I was not. No, I wasn't able to make the last meeting.
That's probably the.
Lauren tried to do exactly what Shayla is speaking of and that's where I thought we decided we were heading and it spun off into a whole different direction. And I had, I don't have.
The problem last month was if we want to move this forward to this month when Shayla's back and, and, and have the conversation, but.
Okay, so. Motion, or I can rescind my motion and somebody could in fact make a motion to do exactly. What Shayla just suggested. And in good faith, I'm going to back my motion out. I, I will.
And, and James withdraws his second. Okay, so we're back to an open table again.
So Shayla, can I ask a question? So if we do want to put in a moratorium, and by the way, everybody. That's, doesn't affect people doing business right now. It affects, as far as I understand, signing up uh, to. signing up with a business license or anything else, new, any new vacation rentals. Am I correct on that, everybody? Is that what we discussed?
Yeah.
It did not, it's not a full present vacation rentals at all, okay?
We do not require a business license currently for a vacation. And we are going to create a black market for vacation rentals as well, just so everybody understands that. Trust me.
We really already have that.
We have people that don't pay TLT taxes, but now you're going to really give people a reason not to pay TLT taxes by creating a black market.
We should have this conversation after a motion is made, to lend it a merit.
Okay. Jessica has a comment, and then I also have a suggestion.
Okay.
Just a quick comment, yes, according to our charter, we do require business licenses for any business conducted in city limits, including vacation rentals. I pointed it out. It was never enforced, that is correct, and I've had that conversation with multiple, it was never enforced, but yes, we do require them according to our charter. I had the conversation actually with Shayla.
Okay.
A while ago, yeah.
And, and I can confirm that it was sort of a matter of interpretation. Some people were interpreting it differently, trying to say vacation rentals were more like long-term rentals, but the difference is the amount of clients, which makes it a business, so. But if I may suggest, I think what the council is trying to do here is put forth a motion to direct planning to formulate a moratorium on new vacation.
Landing conversation over that. On the moratorium part of it.
We can do that right here, right now, if that's the desire of the council.
Well, the, the point is, is that as Shayla said, we're going to need to formulate a document with findings and so forth for this purpose and whatnot. So yes, we could do it as the council, or we could send it to people whose purpose is to do this kind of thing. They're specialized as planning, let them formulate it, and then send, send that to us for final edits and acceptance. Anyway, as I said, that's, that was my suggestion.
And this is going to bring up another topic, which some of, some people aren't going to like, but when Jessica says any business, doing business in the city of Port Orford, I know some of our fishermen pay licenses to the city of Port Orford, and some of them don't. But would they not be included in these business licenses as well?
They are, and they've all received notices already, and they've already actually, I think there's only one that has not paid, that has received the notices. But I did go through that with them.
Okay, bring it back to vacation rentals, though. Bring it back to the question we're talking about. I understand what James is saying, but I was under the impression that the council would have to put the moratorium in place, and then planning would do the deliberation of the, what we wanted them to do, what we directed them to do. So.
That's what I understood.
The council votes on the moratorium. The council votes on the moratorium.
Okay.
Well, then I'll, then I'll put a motion in place. I make a, I make a motion that the city of Port Orford begin the, begin the process to put in place a moratorium against allowing the establishment of any new vacation rental businesses within the city of Port Orford.
I'll second that.
All right, first and second.
Okay, okay, so, real quick, that's, that's more or less the same motion that we went through before with the start the process. And y'all know I'm, I'm not for this. I'm just trying to help the unity of the council here with moving this thing forward. So it sounds like Shayla was saying that we need to put in place a moratorium, not start the process?
So what will happen if this motion passes is that Jessica and I are going to have a conversation with the planning department, not the planning commission. And we will get that forty, the hearings date set and get that forty-five day notice out to DLCD that's required before we can put a moratorium in place.
So his motion's fine?
Yes.
If possibly redundant, being that it already occurred in a previous meeting, but I'm totally okay with just doing it again.
So, yeah, that was the, that was the disconnect there, the not having the council at that one was a trip up. So do we have any discussion on this motion that has, we, okay, Tim, go ahead.
So my only question would be, so I can get on board with this, is it seems to me that motion should include until planning can present findings to the council, where it's not, so really what Lauren just stated was, we are not going to allow any more vacation homes ever, that's what I heard. So I would like to see.
We got to put a timeline on a moratorium.
Well, we can.
You do, and that will come back to you in the findings that will be created and you will approve. A timeline will be in those. You're just starting the process now, staff's going to have to create findings and bring them back to you. You're going to have to adopt them at a hearing after proper notice. I mean, all of these things are going to happen. This is not permanent, and a moratorium cannot be permanent. You have to have a plan to work yourself out of the moratorium.
Thank you, Shayla, for the explanation.
Fairly confident no one on the council wants to shut everything down. We just want to make sure we have the proper management and control in place.
Correct.
All right, so do we have any more discussion on this motion, this re-fried motion, as James might have had? I will call for the vote. Tim?
Did Lauren get a second? Did I not, did I miss it?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Tim, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
James, no.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
All right, motion passes. I got everybody correct?
Yeah.
So Jessica, can I just, can I just relay something to you real quick? The Oregon Revised Statute number that you're going to want to look at is one nine seven point five two zero.
Okay.
And we can chat about that later.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to old business seven C, and that's to send ADUs to planning. Just because we've been looking at this, I noticed that ADUs, you know, are restricted as far as the, some of the vacation rentals in other communities. Like they say, you can't have an ADU as a vacation rental, so maybe if we did decide to send that to planning with our last motion, it might be a good thing for them to research, because that would be a part of, of what we're doing. But really, the question is, is if we want to start the ADU conversation, I think it's a good time personally, but we just need to know if we want to send it on to planning and give them a little direction to start working on it.
So I have a motion that we, we have a workshop with planning on ADUs, and so that they know which, which, what we're looking at for them to look into.
Okay. Tim, what were you going to say?
I'll, I'll second Gary's motion, how's that?
Okay, what were you ever going to say before you even said it?
No, what I was going to say was exactly pretty much what Gary said, that maybe we could do that when we have the vacation conversation with them and give them direction on both. Anyway, but he made a motion and I second it.
Okay. All right, any conversation on that? It sounds like a pretty good idea. We just need to figure out the process of it, but I think we can make that work.
It sounds like to me that the, that the point of the motion is that upon approval of the motion, we will schedule a city council slash planning commission meeting and discuss this matter, if I understood Gary correctly. He's nodding yes. Okay, so I don't think there's a lot of discussion needed. I think we're all for moving forward with the ADU thing, and I think this is another thing like Tim says, is we need to all come prepared with items as to either arguing for ADUs and what we'd like to see, or simply flat out saying, no, we don't want ADUs. Either way, and present that to planning so that they know how to, how to proceed forward. But I'm fairly confident most everybody here is, is pro ADU in some form or another, so I would encourage us to just quickly move forward with this approval.
Why'd you take so long telling me to then? Just kidding. James? Call for the vote. James?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn is muted.
Carolyn, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And Tim?
Tim, yes.
Okay, yeah, and this is something we need to get used to, because communication between council and planning always struggles, because there's so many pieces to it, so I imagine when we have big issues like this, it's going to be pretty regular workshop type sessions. So do we want to kind of try to plan that for before the next council meeting, or at the next planning meeting, or what would be the better timeline? Planning meets first, right?
Well, yeah, but it's kind of crazy, because we have November 2nd, we have part four, the latest new hearing for their thing, and then they have another. So, and then November 18th is the next time we all meet with regards to what happens on November 2nd. So whatever you guys want to do, I'll try to fit it in with everyone's schedule, just let me know.
But, but I like Tim's idea about, and, and I think we ought to come in with some information and, and, you know, ideas really coalesced, not to give them, you know, everybody gives them five things. We need to narrow down and focus on what we believe is really important for them to look at, because I think we know that in the end, that it's better for them and us, that if we give them exactly what we're looking for.
To not waste their time.
Yeah.
Yep, clear, concise questions. Okay, if we have a plan, it sounds like maybe before the next council meeting might be okay, but we'll just plant up the cuff and coordinate it once we talk to planning. Okay, so that's our plan for seven C old business. Okay, now, number eight, seasonal gas tax. We've talked about this before, Jessica put a, a package about it, you know, the research that I saw, there's a lot of merit to it. I don't know what, think of it, but I imagine we'd be looking for a motion to move this into the next step, or move towards getting this on the next ballot, so. Go ahead, put in the conversation, James, it's your, if you want to say anything, James, you're the one that brought it to the table, so please, now's the time.
Oh, well, I mean, as everybody knows, I'm definitely for it. I'm actually a little unsure as to exactly what the next step is. I feel like it should be that we draft up what we feel the gas tax actually should be, so that then we have something firm, the particulars put together, to move it forward. But I also feel like there should be a, a stage of interacting with the public in regards to this once we have what we want drafted together, to make sure that it also coincides with the general public's feelings. I don't want to, you know, just go blah, here it is, and, sorry, and move forward without having public interaction. We want to make sure that the public's on board. So what I would ask is that we basically decide on some particulars for it, and then ask our staff to draft it up, and then take another look at it at the next meeting.
And James is absolutely right. If you read that whole document, if the people in this community do not believe that you're going to use the money, especially if you say you're going to use it for roads, you've got to use it for roads. And where they have lost the gas tax in that, in communities, is where people were not informed enough, were not kept up to date enough, and their story got out, and it seemed to be spread by the Oregon, organized oil industry. I don't know how, why they would be against it, but they actually started pushing that the city was going to start using it for a general fund. And the city stopped talking to the people, and bam, you know, like three to four or five days before, the, the oil fund spent a lot of money in the town, and they lost them, they, and if you read it, you'll see, everyone that lost, that's exactly what happened. So James is absolutely right. We need to decide what we're going to spend it on, we need to focus on the pluses of what's that going to do for the community. But it seems like ninety-nine percent of it is always based on improving the roads in the community. And that, that seems to be where the, the people are accepting of a gas tax.
And some of the things too, that, that were done, just so you guys know, there were some surveys that were sent out to different, you know, so to another city. If they need, if they had quite, you know, if they could talk to them about surveys, different things, asking what they wanted, what they weren't interested in, with regards to the road improvements, or also this. Another thing I know that we're going to do is set up another fund, because, you know, we have obviously the general fund and all those other funds. So when we do this, we would set up within the accounting system another fund, so that would be on tracking, so it'd be easier, so everyone can kind of see where everything's going, just to make it totally transparent on our financials.
But we have our part, we have our road fund. I mean, there's not much in it.
This would be, I would like to, I mean, first, I think this would be better to just kind of pull off to the side, because everyone, like Lauren said, is going to be looking at that particular thing, and if we put those in with other road funds, it might kind of confuse. So that was kind of my thought process.
Yeah, if you read that document, the, the cities that won were very specific on what the money was going to be spent on, and sometimes they even put a sunset factor in it. Some people built a bridge, the bridge that they had was falling apart. They said, we need this money to build this bridge, and as soon as the bridge was built and finished, the tax was over. And, and, you know, because it's called sunset clauses. I mean, that's how specific that people are looking for when you're talking about gas taxes, especially with gas as high as it is right now, so. And that, that's, that's what the, if you read the article, you'll see over and over again, that's what happens.
Tim has his hand up.
Sorry, there's so many little screens. Tim?
So it seems like to me, when you're talking about a gas fund, it's obvious it goes to streets, that's just my personal opinion.
Exactly.
Our fellow counselor Brett Webb, you know, fought for a couple of years of his tenure to get us a gas tax, actually, or not get us a gas tax, get us a street fund, which we actually put monies in from our budget every year. But it seems like to me it should go to a street fund, and, you know, we've discussed all this in the past. We talked about, if I'm not mistaken, right around two cents per gallon, going six months a year, May, June, July, August, September, October. And then the locals wouldn't have to fit the bill in the winter months, is what we were, we were trying to shoot at the traveler's pan for most of it. I don't know, it seems like to me we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We need to decide that we want a gas tax, how much, and where we want it to go. It's three simple questions. And of course, educating the public is the fourth element, and the most important element, just like Lauren spoke about.
So the most important question is if the council wants to move forward with this process. We have a pretty good idea on where we want to put it and how we want to move forward, so the next step would just be drafting up the ordinance. So what's the best way to move forward? Just a motion? I mean, I know you want the details, James, but where it goes, the amount that, that we're we're thinking of the seasonal tax is going to be, and then what's the third one?
The other two big ones, but I know there was.
Out the seasonal, and then where, where the money is going.
And the time, I'm sorry, and the time limit, obviously, what time of year we want to do it.
Right, he said that.
Yeah, yeah, and, but if you, if you notice, and we had some discussion about this before, there were some various exceptions that we wanted to put in place, so that it would apply. so that it would apply as specifically as possible to vacationers, you know, because that's what we're targeting. We're targeting drawing in money from the outside and whatnot. You know, so there could be provisions put in place, and that's one of the things that we need to have staff research further. Although if you read this document, you'll see, which I know it's really, really long. I read this document like eight months ago or whatnot, but re-reviewed it, but like, you can put exceptions in place. And I do believe we could put exceptions that say fuel sold for fishing vessels is exempt. And things like that. So I do believe we can protect our community. So, and that's, that's why, Pat, I'm saying more details. Is I understand what you're saying. You're addressing the core, but I feel like there's a lot more petals to go on the flower in order to make this a complete unit. And that is some of them, is like exempting our fishing vessels and so forth.
Why don't so why don't I put it together, you know, kind of, you know, look at all the other places I've done, you know, seasonal gas tax, and just kind of do a comparison summary table between all the different jurisdictions with the differences and kind of things that, you know, you guys are interested in, and it'll be good for our community, and that's something you guys can look at the next council meeting as options to have in this ordinance.
I, I think that's a great next step, if everybody else is okay with that.
Because I don't really feel like we're right, quite there for a motion yet, but we all, by consensus, I can see, going to want to move forward with this, so let's go with that route.
Okay, fantastic. So we'll have it on the next, next agenda.
Nope, you got to wait eight months again. Okay, so now we're getting into the business of things. New business B, commission appointment of Kelly Betchell. Betchell.
So Pat? I'll make the motion to accept Kelly Becto's application for the Parks Commission.
Sorry, Greg.
And these all, all these candidates were interviewed by the Parks Commission, so any, uh, I guess this is pretty much a call for the vote question on this one, is that?
Well, we
Question, but not on that one.
So we had not to lengthen this meeting, because I know we want to kind of get this over with, but we had kind of discussed people at least taking a minute or two and putting forth why they, why they would be well-suited for the position. Kind of like a miniature interview for the council. Did we want to maybe do that? Since we discussed that?
We always get to this. Question, that's why planning or parks or whoever interviews the people that they're going to be working with.
James, I can speak on this.
And I think Carolyn might even brought it up from her time on planning of, of planning being able to interview or park so that you're working with the.
Right.
So.
I know that at the Parks meeting that we had.
What's that?
I'm sorry, the Parks meeting that we had, this is the last two Parks meetings. The first one was for Clark, and this last meeting was for Kelly and Amy, and they were both at the meetings, and we we liked, we did, we did an interview process with the Parks Commission, and that's why we brought it to you guys. We figured they were good fits for the Parks Commission. They all brought different aspects and all age groups and everything else, so it was nice, a nice mix for us.
And I think if they, if they bring, if planning or parks brings it to the council like that, they've already been interviewed, and they, each of those groups know more what, how the applicant's going to fit in than the council does. So I feel like if they're approving these candidates, that it seems appropriate for us to approve them.
Right.
But it's not defeats the point of us doing the approval. Why don't we just set it up so they elect their own members and automatically appoint them?
I think that's, I think we have to.
We have to appoint.
Yeah, yep. That, I understand that. I'm just saying that it defeats the purpose of that requirement if we simply say, oh, they recommend it, and we liked it. Now, I have no objection and whatnot. It's just that we're essentially voting blind on these things because the current commission recommends it. And to me, voting blind is a bad idea. I think it's irresponsible in general. But I don't think now is really the appropriate time for the, for this as a discussion. I think if we're going to discuss reviewing our procedures, then we should take that back to an agenda item and do so, which you know I would support reviewing that, because I think this process needs changes. But at the moment, I'd recommend we just get back to approving or whatnot the people.
Got you. And there's merit to what you're saying. There's always ways to stack the deck, so it's not, I'm sure. Tim, what do you got?
The only thing I have is I agree with James. We spoke about this before, and quite frankly, I probably failed as your last mayor, not getting us taken care of. We've discussed it many times. We all were in agreeance. But we never did follow through with it, so therefore we are where we are, like James just said, and let's vote on these folks.
Well, yeah, and I think that's where the disconnect was, is we wanted to have it interviewed by the commission and then by the council, and we got halfway there, but we haven't done the next step, so.
Right, right.
You learn though, I will call for the question on the application for Kelly Betchell. Tim?
Tim, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Okay. Motion passed. The next commission appointment would be for for Clark.
Clark, concurrent?
Recurrent. I make a motion to approve Clark concurrent to the Parks Commission.
I'll second that.
I have a question on that. We already have someone in the urban growth boundary on, on parks. Is it, is not living in the city not an issue for parks? I know in some, we can have one person, but not, but not two, or?
That's something you brought up.
One person out of, in the, in the the district, in that, the district boundary. I'm not thinking of the word, but the outside the city. Urban.
Planning has that requirement.
Yeah. What, planning has that requirement, but parks doesn't?
I don't think parks has any such requirement.
Okay, so just out of curiosity, that would put two or three people in the urban growth boundary on parks?
I think it would be two. I know Eddie Kessler's gonna be in the urban growth family, but I don't know who would the other one be?
Well, if this person gets selected, that would be the second one. I just
Yeah, second one, yes.
Okay.
You said three, so I didn't know.
Yeah. No, I was just checking because it's, it's an out-of-town address, so. Okay, I just was pointing that out. I will call for the question then. Um, Tim?
Tim, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
Greg, yes.
And for the third Parks Commission appointment, Amy Munford?
I'd make a motion that we approve Amy Munford to the Parks Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay. So when we get applications, P O boxes don't work either. I hate to be nitpicking on this, but addresses are super important, but
She looks up Jackson Street, so I'm just making sure.
All right, Tim?
Tim, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
For Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
And Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
Okay. Moving on to right-of-way request by Cynthia Freeman on 250 15th Street. I didn't see the, I don't see the public review. I don't see the reviewer. I got a blank review.
Yeah, that's right. It came in the same day, but she's not doing anything, digging or anything, to be honest. She's just putting a plant down. But she, it came in the same day I was doing the council packet, so we just kind of shut it out there, because I know John was busy that day.
So is that plant over a water line or a water service?
No, it is not, because I double-checked that, too.
That's the only question I had, because I didn't see it.
Yeah, no, it is not.
Excuse me, Jessica, but it says she's going to plant shrubs in a row, not just one plant.
No, the right, meaning row of right-of-way.
Oh, 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 okay. I'm sorry. I read it, I read it literally, so.
I asked the same question, to be honest, so there you go.
So that didn't, so Public Works was okay with it. Hank Hobart was okay with it as far as view around a corner or anything like that?
Yes, Hank was perfectly fine with it. Don is sitting right there. He can answer, but there was no digging or anything around there, so yes.
Thank you.
Now, there's a no on here next to sewer. Is that from you, Tom? John? It says, uh, green sewer, and there's a check mark, but then is that a no next to it in the circle?
I couldn't tell you.
I, I think it means that it's not there.
No sewer.
No sewer, probably.
Oh, no sewer. Okay, what?
So I have a quick question for John, if that's okay. It's easier. So we just had that water main break right outside my house, and it was due to the bushes and all the roots and everything else. Is that, is there a water main, is there a water line that could be possible for this, John, you know?
Not in that area. But
That was my question for this, was because that was indirectly what you guys had said, those hedges had grown, the roots had grown down, so I wanted to make sure.
Right, right. Like, Jackson Street where we just were, that shrub hedge was directly over the main. That's what we got to kind of put a stop to.
Yeah, but that was my only hanger for this one, so.
Does the leak make the roots, or do the roots make the leak?
Hmm. Good question, Pat.
Okay, so I'm waiting for a motion on this. Okay, what do you, do you have a question?
My, my question was, normally I always take a look at these right-of-way requests, but unfortunately, I arrived in town just before the meetings started, so I didn't get a chance to do that. But I'm trying to understand what, what is going on. Obviously, this is a beautification attempt to plant shrubbery along the edge of the road. Normally, I don't see any problems with something like that, as long as it's back away from the road a little ways. It's a little hard to tell based on this drawing, like, exactly, you know, where it's going to be and whatnot, but something else we have to think about is, is it going to block parking that people may utilize from time to time, and get us into a whole nother rigmarole there. Carolyn knows what I'm talking about.
And it is, it is right there, just so you know, because I've had that conversation already, trying to figure it out.
And then also, is this in the vicinity of any fire hydrants?
No.
No, Gary says no. So then my, my main question stands is, is this going to reduce or eliminate currently available parking that is being used or potentially likely to be used in the very near future?
There's a drainage ditch that's right there. Is she going to put them between the drainage ditch and the edge of the pavement?
Cynthia, on?
I think Cynthia's on, it looks like.
Yeah, she was going to be there. She is, yeah.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, it's about 12 feet back from the water line, and no, I'm not planning on putting, there's a ditch, right, so there can't be any parking there. So I wouldn't be eliminating any parking, James.
Okay, perfect, but you're saying that you'd be putting the plants on your property side of the ditch, not on the roadside of the ditch?
Right. I'd be in the right-of-way. That's what I'm trying to get permission for. And it would be 12 feet, about, I measured today about 12 feet back from the water line on the road.
Oh, you've got plants already planted there. Were they going to be amongst those?
Closer to my house. So I'm not doing anything in that, in the, to impair the drainage at all.
Perfect.
Oh, this, this sounds like not an issue at all. This is perfect.
You could tell? Make the motion to approve Cynthia's right-of-way, Cynthia Freeman's right-of-way.
Okay, we got a first and a second. We've had our discussion.
No. Carolyn?
Carolyn has her hand up.
I agree. Go ahead, Carolyn.
It says here she's going to plant shrubs and trees. Now, if you're going to plant shrubs and trees.
Shrubs. Sorry, Carolyn, if that's not clear. The trees are going to be on my property. The right-of-way extends back 40 feet. I have that marked by my builder, and so I know where the right-of-way is exactly. The trees are going on my side on what would be my property, but above in the right-of-way, I wouldn't want to be trimmed. It's more for, to create a living fence. A lot of trees were taken down around the corner on Jackson and 15th. You probably know that, and so I'd like to create, rather than make a fence, which I'm lukewarm on fences in general. I wanted to create a living fence. I have a gardening business on the side, and I was a teacher for years, but now I'm going, I'm doing my own thing at my own house, but I have a lot of experience with doing landscape design.
Okay. And the shrub? How big is the shrub's going to be?
Well, they're myrtles, so myrtles can grow. I'm going to keep them trimmed, so probably, I don't know, six feet, seven feet.
If they're that tall, what happens when, if you'd have the fire department needs to come in, or electric or anything like that? Would they be out of the way?
No, no. No, and also there's another little RV parking pad on my property, so that's going to be open, so to allow access onto my property for the future, and I give it a lot of thought.
Okay.
James?
Yeah, so just to remind everybody, Port Orford is a tree city and whatnot. We've been losing our trees over a period of time and whatnot, but it is in our nature to have our trees on our right-aways. So, you know, if we want to keep what we've got, I don't think it would hurt for somebody to replant some trees in Port Orford.
Can I just add one more thing? They're all natives. I have, do native restoration. That's one of my projects with kids over the years, and they're all natives. They're ecotypes from this area, and I started a number of them myself.
Okay, but as I was going to say, but if we approve, I didn't hear Gary's motion because of data lag, but I'm assuming he basically said to approve it. If we do so, because of the fact that it does say trees, we would be approving it as written, so. But I'm okay with that. I think this is great, and I encourage everybody to vote yes.
And a friendly reminder, too, if the city ever needs to get into that area, that tree is going to be removed without question, and it's unfortunate, but it's the risk of the right-of-way, so. The liability on one doesn't hang us out there too much. All right, so I got a first and a second. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Gary?
Gary, yes.
Tim?
Tim, yes.
Carolyn?
Carol's going to say yes for a change.
Anyway, we needed a little bit of positivity. James?
James, yes.
Greg?
Greg, yes.
And Lauren?
Lauren, yes.
And I'd just like to say that it's really great to have people putting forth the effort to beautify, you know, city property, even if it's you know, more or less part of their property. I really like this, and I hope that more people will continue to follow suit. you know, more or less part of their property. Uh, I really like this and I hope that more people will continue to follow suit.
Thanks, James.
You're welcome. I'm excited to see what it looks like when it's done.
Me too, because it's a bombed out mess when I got here a year ago.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, we're going to be moving on to AF, the A-frame discussion. Arts Council slash Parks. Alrighty. Where do we want to start with this? We have a, go ahead, Greg.
Brian, Brian Thompson, the head of the Parks Commission is here too to talk about what he would like to do. And, and I'll let you start, but I know Brian's here, so we, we want to throw it to him for some what he has plans or what the Parks Department would like to do.
Yeah, let's, let's hear about the, the park plan. Well, I mean, yeah, okay, let, let us, that's not the issue before us right now. Let's go ahead and tell us what your plans are and, and we'll go from there.
Okay, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I think, uh, Eddie Kessler is trying to chime in, but, um, he said his audio doesn't look like it's working, but I know he's on the call, so. He might, I, I don't know what caller ID he is, uh, and I think, uh, he's a park commissioner and then CR and Fraser, I believe, is on this call too, so. Um, basically what's before you is, uh, Parks has unanimously voted to revoke the Arts Council contract, which actually um, is, i- i- it's, uh, expired now and they'd have to renew, um, is my understanding. But what, what is, uh, going on? Um, thank you, first of all, uh, councilors for, uh, the appointment of, uh, Kelly Bechtel, Clark Caserick and Amy Munford, um, all, uh, great individuals and, and we're really getting a family oriented um, board together now with your, uh, appointments. We have a full commission and, uh, very excited about the future for Parks and Recreation in Port Orford. I, just by way of introduction, my name is Brian Thompson and I am the chair for the Parks Department. I coach, uh, cross-country for, um, uh, Pacific High School and also track and field for Driftwood Elementary. And, uh, very connected with the youth in our community. And, uh, and because, uh, Leela Thompson, who's port commissioner, and I have a little three-year-old, uh, as well as one on the way next month, um, we're very involved with, uh, young families, uh, in the community. It's with this, uh, excitement of not only the new commission, but, um, the, you know, up and coming families that we brought to you. Uh, this unanimous, again, I say decision by Parks and what, um, we want to see is that it fall back, that this is the A-frame building right at Buffington Park, fall back under Parks directly. Where we're able to then, uh, allow scheduling for birthday parties, which has come to my attention gosh through the years now, as things that people want. Um, uh, art instruction, uh, in the building. Um, that was something that, uh, was discussed prior, but my understanding is that insurance was an issue by the, uh, organization and thus there, there was no, even pre-COVID, um, uh, like kids classes or anything like that. Um, basically bringing back the arts, uh, the A-frame, uh, to direct, um, community use. So the community at large would be able to use the A-frame. Um, we would love to see that the Arts Council even, uh, have their meetings, uh, in the building and still do that, uh, Christmas tree lighting and the things that Arts Council does. Absolutely want to see that continue. Uh, but broaden the scope of who's able to use it and which would, would inevitably, it would have to fall under Parks directly. So that's why you have the motion before you and, uh, hopefully we will garner your, your either votes or consensus, um, uh, tonight. And, uh, I think it would, I'd need to cite CR and Fraser for her work with fundraising for a new playground. There is anticipation of some outdoor events to help in that fundraising. That would also be at that location. So a number of things that it would open up for the community use, and I think it's a valuable move.
Thank you. So one of the hitches in that is the, uh, the second line of the lease we have with the Arts Council says the lease shall continue from year to year unless either party gives the other written notice not less than 90 days prior to the end of the annual lease period. That, the lease is not to be terminated by the election of that party. So we do have a contract with them. Because they have, Jessica, they have not given us written notice of vacating.
That is correct. And they are still, as of this month, they paid all of the, the items that are needed to keep this contract, meaning utilities.
Right. And I'm not saying to demote anything. I'm just throwing that out there right off the bat because we are in contract with, with, with the Arts Council.
So can we give them as a city?
If it were to change over, and would your programs, would that take on more liability for the city? Or we would just be opening up the building and then individuals with programs would be coming in and, and get, putting that liability on themselves, for lack of a better term?
Correct. That, that would be my understanding. And Tidy, can you speak to that?
Mr. Tidy?
What we were thinking was that it was the, the city has their own insurance and that's the city-owned building that's per se itself. So the city's insurance would cover programs, just like it does for the American Legion Hall and for the Community Center Building. We have this, we have that type of insurance for children already. So again, we can do those programs.
Okay, because I thought the liability changed with each program. That's, I'm only looking for pitfalls. Uh, Tim, oh, Tim and then Jessica.
So anytime we would charge to use that building, we would lose our recreational immunity. So it would have to be that whatever groups utilized it, there'd be no charge because once you charge, we lose our recreational immunity and we can be sued. And Shayla can probably chime into that.
That is correct, but it would operate the same as the other community buildings that should be covered under our general liability insurance. But we would need to notify our insurance carriers of the situation. But it, it is true. As soon as you charge, you lose your recreational immunity.
So that means we're already losing recreational immunity at the other two places in town that we rent out, correct? Community building at American Legion, correct?
It was my understanding they were to provide their own insurance at the time, but I, Shayla would have to look at that.
I think that they probably, I think they probably do provide their own insurance and the city is listed as additionally insured on those policies. Um, but we also have CIS insurance coverage over some things.
Yeah, if I may, Eddie Kessler is trying to call in. He is here in the meeting. It's just he can't, he can't say anything and he's, uh, he's trying to. I don't know. Is that on his end?
Yeah, it would be on his end. I don't see it here.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
So we have two things to figure out, all right? We need to figure out the insurance angles on this and, and we are in contract with, with the Arts Council, so. I mean, unless the Arts Council wants to, well, I guess we, go ahead, Jessica.
So the, the other concern I was thinking about is just, I mean, I've done, I did the league for my nephew in Vegas. And anyone that did anything with kids, even recreational, have to go through background checks and stuff. So I'm not quite sure. And Shayla, you may know, I'm not quite sure kind of where we would fall in that. If they're doing something and having a bunch of kids there, is that something that we would need to do?
So I would say that if it was being hosted by a city committee, then yes, you would probably need to do your background checks. But if you're renting it out for birthday parties and, and things like that, I, I don't know why that would require background checks on behalf of the city.
Right, but just more city. If you're doing it, an event for a city, basically. Got it, okay.
Can I ask one quick question then too? We are, I guess we're under contract, but it says both, either party give 90-day notice. So can we give the Arts Council a 90-day notice that we would like them to, to vacate that property?
No.
That's, that's what it sounds like this motion is technically all about is, is that we would be following the provision to terminate this. But the termination wouldn't go into effect until February 29th of the coming year. Um, but we're required to give them 90 days' notice. So if we're going to achieve that, we need to get on top of it now. Um, but yeah, I, I would say that, that based on this, it doesn't take effect until then. That was one of the first things I was going to say was, you know, we have to, we have to follow the contract.
Yeah, at least the 90-day, we, but as a council, we can give the Arts Council 90 days' notice saying that, um, yeah, the end of February, that the building would turn back on the toss. If we, if we decide that tonight, correct? Okay.
You need to do that by the end of November, if my math is correct.
No, I totally understand. So that's something we could bring up tonight. Okay.
So in the order of fairness, though, we should have, like, shouldn't the Art Council get a say? Is there, is Beverly or anyone from the Arts Council here or do, do we know if they have intentions?
So I talked to Beverly, yeah, I talked to Beverly extensively. I'm surprised she's not here. I thought she was going to be, but she did not, she was not happy. If that may say so, just because number one, you know, when they signed this lease, obviously shortly after everything kind of, not shortly after, but a year after when the term went up, you know, COVID kind of hit, so they said everything had to be canceled at that point. Um, and she said, you know, yes, they, they wouldn't mind working with something like that, but she would like to at least be able to work a two-year timeframe where they can recoup their funds from just paying for this because they've gone into the reserve. This is what she had said when I had the conversation with her. Um, so I'm just, that was just what she had said. I, I had thought she was going to come today, actually, to be honest. And I don't know if she's maybe one of the other callers, but it was the conversation that I had with her is those were her two big concerns. She would like to be able to recoup their funds that they've been paying for this for the past two years, so be able to have those fundraisers. You know, and then, so continue in the building for a little bit of time so that they can recoup. And then, you know, at that point, that's a conversation they would be willing to have.
And you were the first person that contacted the Arts Council about this, this proposal?
So according to Beverly, I'm just saying, I'm just repeating what she had said. She had said that they may have had the conversation two years ago before this happened. But, um, she said it was not anything right before this meeting is what she had said.
Brian can chime in on that, that.
What's, what's exactly the question now?
If you would talk to Beverly about this.
Like, it sounded like Beverly didn't know about this until Jessica had talked to her because she was upset about it.
We've talked about it and, um, you know, it's, uh, like I said, the whole point of this is to open it up so more people can have use and access. The, 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 the whole point is it's right in the middle of all sorts of activity. And, and frankly, we're looking at it as what can be a hub for Port Orford arts and activities. And that's the whole point, um, that we're trying to, to make is to let the community use it. And that's why I come back to, uh, imploring your vote on this, uh, tonight. And then we would be able to give the 90 days', you know, notice in, in all fairness and, you know, Pat, if there's a way that maybe some of those, uh, uh, you know, as far as, uh, sewer and electric that have been, could, could be alleviated or refunded. I don't know what the logistics of that would be, but um, we have families that are ready to roll and that's the point of what I'm trying to make tonight. And I think there's, uh, following suit of the energy that is in the Parks Commission. I think it's, it's, it's a valid thing and, uh, I wouldn't come to you with it if I didn't think so. Um, that, that's the.
I'm on the Arts Council. May I speak? May I speak? I'm Susan Russell. I'm on the Arts Council. And in lieu of Beverly not being here, I'd like to say a few words in, uh, about this. Um, we got possession of it in February of 2018. We immediately went about totally redoing the inside, painting every surface, uh, fixing floors, fixing the toilet. We added a coated, um, door lock, GFCIs, uh, bought 50-plus, um, chairs. I think you guys were supposed to be given this list. Did you receive it, councilors?
No, we, we have not received nothing from, from Arts Council about this.
Well, I gave it, I sent it to Jessica and I thought she was going to share it, but, um, anyway, um, we put in staircase handles to the second floor. Uh, we added this. We, we, uh, purchased and installed a sound system. We purchased, uh, love seat, three chairs, coffee table, et cetera. Coffee pot, teapot, extensive, uh, flatware, glasses and so forth. And a popcorn popper and a TV and a DVD, uh, player. All of this stuff is now stored in the Arts Council building. Uh, we are still under contract, have been, um, uh, keeping that up, paying our bills on time, as Jessica told you. Um, and then it's, and Brian, I totally understand and would support your idea of, of using the building. But we've put in over $6,000 just in additional, um, input into the building. And with COVID, and we had started quite an expensive plan for 2019, 2020. And then COVID hit and the last two years, we've not been able to do anything, or year and a half, not been able to do anything. The council is still meeting via Zoom. We can't have activities at the Arts Council building. Uh, if, you know, especially with unvaccinated children there. It's just, um, oh, that is not a good plan, I don't think. Um, we've held many successful events there. Uh, offers an author's night with all local authors. It packed the house. Uh, we had the Live Culture Coast was there. That was a whole coastal, uh, event. Uh, we've had music events, um, monthly movie nights. We were open during art walks. And we had planned for classes with Elaine Roman, Becky Raymond, who was going to do greeting cards, uh, mandalas, a poetry step slam. I was going to do readers theater. Um, Bev was going to continue our first Friday flick. Uh, John was planning a Gong Show and we were planning a night with Leonard Cohen, all of, uh, an impersonator, like an elf impersonator. So, um, it's not that we haven't, that the building's been idle and it, and, um, because we wanted it to be. But Bev especially is, um, very concerned about being fair to those that would come into such a small space and how we would, um, keep them safe, especially children. I'm, I'm in agreement with Brian. It needs to be opened up and allowed other groups to, to use it. But I also think in fairness, you know, we've gone above and beyond what was our commitment to the city, which was $1,500 worth of repairs each year, plus paying all the utilities and not to be able to at least try to recoup some of that loss or investment. We thought it was our building. It was back when nobody wanted that building. Um, we need to be able to recoup that somehow.
Okay.
May I?
Uh, this is Commissioner Kessler from the Parks Board. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yay. Um, I mean, that's, that's all really good to hear and I appreciate the information, like the more detailed information regarding what the Arts Council has invested into the, into the Arts Building. Uh, I think the bigger concern for the, for the Parks Commission is it is a public resource. Even though the Arts Council has taken over and has invested this, made this fiscal investment in there. But, um, the city has the opportunity to make some kind of nominal profit off of the building or at least make it fiscally solvent for ourselves so that the greater community can use it. And that's, we're more interested in that turn of events than, uh, extending a contract with the Arts. uh, extending a contract with the Arts Council that keeps it exclusively under their management and control. And I mean, I've I've never, I don't know what, does the Arts Council, does the city know? I don't know as a Parks Commissioner, what the Arts Council pays for their contract. Do we know that? What is that amount?
We were obliged to pay fifteen hundred dollars a year in improvements to the building because it was used as a residence beforehand and we made lots of improvements. I spent many hours on a ladder painting up in those sharp eaves and um,
But monthly, it's about maybe three hundred dollars, two hundred between water, it's water, sewer and or utilities. That's all that's paid monthly.
Okay, where's the disconnect here, though? We have two groups of volunteers, both great groups for the city. And we have one spot, but there's been no communication between these two groups. And now it's us before the City Council to make this decision when it's still pretty, I mean, all the parties aren't here. I'm glad that we have the input that we do. But are we prepared to make this decision tonight? I mean, we're a motion away.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
All that the Arts Council has done for the community, we just wanna make sure we don't step on any toes if we don't have to. Like, this is all solvable and it.
I was told that this was not up for vote tonight, that it was just meant to be for discussion. And I tried to get a meeting with everybody, but we weren't able to find a time. Um, and I think sharing is great. And to have.
But I don't, it hasn't been shared, though.
As long as the trends can be worked out, we don't, I don't feel we have to have exclusive control. Bev does, and I don't know where the other folks are. But I'm very much in favor of sharing and working it out to where uh, we just would need to secure the things that we've purchased so that they're not broken and and destroyed because, you know, it's.
And that's what we need to get to because there's no reason that we need to feel contentious about this. And I feel a little bit of contention and it's just something we need to figure out. So Brian, go ahead.
Well, uh, real quick, I need I need to interject here. As a point of order, we're a half hour past the end of the meeting. Um, in order to continue a meeting, it is the responsibility of the mayor to terminate the meeting on time or in order to continue and get the approval of the council. Uh, at this time, I would recommend that the meeting be terminated and that this matter be heard at the next meeting, unless the council would like to immediately decide on continuing this meeting.
Well, James, I was gonna get there, but let me check with Shayla really quick. If you have the ability to shut down the meeting, I'm running. Is that, is that true Shayla? Can he call a point of order and say the meeting is over? Because I don't see a time that we stop.
I don't know that, did we adopt the timeline?
We adopted a two hour limit on our meetings.
We did.
Yes, we did. Uh, Tim, you're you're muted.
Just, okay.
I was just gonna suggest, why don't I meet with the Arts Council and or Parks, both of them together? Kind of do a little mediator type thing and see if we can come up with an agreement before the next meeting. Not when both parties could.
Much information on the other side of it, you know what I mean? As far from the Arts Council and we're just trying to be polite with everyone. It's a great idea. I personally am totally behind it. I think everybody on the council's behind it. We just need to get past this conversation and on to the next one. So if if arts and and, I'm not saying you have to get along, but if we can just sit down and have a conversation and get to the bottom of it, then we we can have it next month and it probably won't slow, slow the process down. Will one more month hurt you, Brian?
Didn't Shayla just say we have to decide by November, I thought? Shayla, didn't you?
We have to give one day's notice, which I think is the end of November.
Basically, it's gonna be under their, here's the problem. It's under their insurance, which doesn't allow for any youth things is my understanding. And so we're right, we're gonna be right back in the same boat. I mean, it's basically, in order for the community wide use, it has to be terminated. That's, that's the whole point of this and we want to.
How long have we known about this? It has to be done by the end of November. I mean, it sounds like you've been working on this for a while.
Well, no, they, Bev brought it to our attention last year that they couldn't do the kids' classes per their insurance. Though that's been a known thing, so.
Gotcha. So the city can do kids' classes, though, with our insurance?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's a big question for me, so.
Yes, that's the hitching to get him.
All right, so can I get a motion to table this then?
Motion to table this till next meeting, with a meeting between Parks and the Arts Council.
All right, Tim?
Uh, yeah, I'd like for council to be responsible for this meeting. I appreciate Jessica interjecting, but I feel like we need to be there so we can hear all the points of view.
Uh, as the parks for the is, I'll be there.
Yeah, so Tim, yes.
Lauren? Yes, Lauren, yes.
Greg, yes.
James?
James, yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
And Carolyn?
Carolyn, yes.
So I just have a question. Is this gonna be a separate meeting? Or are we gonna just address it at the next council meeting altogether? That's, that's kind of the catch twenty-two. I'm just wondering so that I know how to schedule.
Put it back on the old business.
There's no action involved, so we could just have a short workshop with all the parties if we wanted to or even just Greg. But if, it's an important conversation and it's unfortunate that it went this way, but it did. And we're just trying to keep all of our great volunteers amiable. Because we're all gonna be working with each other eventually. There's only a thousand people here, so. Moving on, considerations, we'll go through this quick. Uh, before we do citizen considerations, so Monica Ward from the county is here and I cannot figure out why she would sit through this meeting for fun. Did you have something to report to the city or did we miss anything?
No, I've just been listening in, uh, just kind of keeping the pulse check because of all the plans that we're working on at the county level. And I can take into considering consideration and just like example, uh, your state of emergency for uh, water and everything. We've included that in our natural hazard mitigation plan so that we can look at federal funding in the future. So just situational awareness.
I was hoping that's why you were here. Thank you. All right, citizen concerns. Steve?
Real quick, you wanna go home. For your record, Banks, Oregon, the city of Banks, Oregon, for the fourth time has extended its moratorium on development due to the exact problems with water. They issued their first moratorium in two thousand eighteen and they just this year extended it another six months until they resolved the problem. They must have a plan like Shayla talked about, but I don't think you need to go through as much public process. When I worked with Rural Economic Development for the state of Oregon and collaborated with the League of Oregon Cities, that was a major effort by the League of Oregon, uh, Oregon League of Cities to work with state agencies and the legislature to try to give flexibility for cities when they have emergencies like this. My second thing is I'd like to encourage, and I sent all of you a link about the Banks of Oregon. Uh, the second thing is think about best management practices. Lauren is exactly on the mark with that. Um, there's no new need to recreate the wheel or, the Oregon League of Cities has wonderful spreadsheets, Jessica, you can go to. I shared that with uh, Terry, that shows all the franchise fees rates, all the different taxes, municipal taxes that the city has and their rates. Um, so that can help you out a lot. Uh, when I was in Ashland this week, Ashland has a five percent tax on all prepared food, restaurants, delis, grocery stores, and it goes directly to improve their reservoir that's leaking in the city of Ashland. Uh, the other thing is you talked about best practices, uh, trees. Many cities have city arborists and I can tell you John would have a heart attack if someone planted a uh, a giant secoya on their property line. And we have an arborist here with Brian who would tell you that their root mass probably covers an entire acre. And so there's a reason why cities have certain trees and why cities require landowners to repair sidewalks because they plant inappropriate trees where their roots lift up the sidewalk. So I encourage you to look at a list. These are widely available that can tell you what's acceptable trees and bushes to not harm city services. Um, and the last thing is what Lauren mentioned about ADUs. I think the Planning Commission has been doing an outstanding job. And when they looked at building heights, they assigned uh, planning commissioners along with a citizen volunteer. And we looked at all the other coastal communities and looked at their planning ordinances so that we could kind of bring them together and so that the city Planning Commission wasn't recreating the wheel. Enough said.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Anyone else? I'd like to ask, uh, everybody keeps saying that these are homes that are not commercial. Uh, my property is owned MU, mixed use, which means it's commercial and residential. So is your new ordinance or your moratorium not gonna cover commercial property that I pay commercially taxed and other things? Because I feel like that I'm already taxed really high everywhere I go. So when I, I don't go eat in Ashland and I live really close to there because it costs a lot more. So unless it's a special occasion, I don't go there. So I think we're all overtaxed on fuel, which you guys were talking about targeting vacationers with your new gas tax. And you said you're not here to end vacation rentals, you just need a happy number. So when you submit this to the Planning Commission, are you gonna give them your gas tax thing? And tell them that, look, we need a happy number of vacationers to pay this gas tax? Is fifty enough with five people in each house or a hundred? So that's all I gotta say. Thank you for services.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any answers to what I'm saying or are we not allowed to talk, you said?
No, it's not, no, that's one of the unfortunate things about council meetings is for citizens' concerns and considerations, we're not supposed to answer you. It's just the process of it. Doesn't mean you can't come to the city and talk to us. It's just the, the Roberts rules, so.
Okay, well, like I said, nobody told me when I invested in your town that I might, because I live in Grass Pass, that I might have to move there in order to enjoy the fruits of my property and my labor, so. Thank you very much again. Have a nice evening.
Okay, anyone else? All right, staff, you gave such long reports, we gotta be good, yeah? Okay, especially you, John, you gotta cut that down. You don't know how, how much you put in last month? Just kidding, just kidding, they're great. I'm broken.
John just fixed all my points next week. John just fixed all that stuff and you won't have to talk so long.
Just don't write it down, make it look better. Uh, okay, uh, council concerns?
Tim?
So I have a couple. You heard our Public Works Director ask us to put the RV and the rideaway on the next agenda. I don't know if we have something already in an ordinance that can cover that and we don't.
No, so it's ba, it's only vehicles that are in the mobile. Um, Pat and I have talked about this a few times. So anything that's in mobile or unlicensed, not insured, our items, we do not have anything on item, on things that can move, basically. So we can tell them to, you know, ask them to move that she moves it one inch and one inch back and that's good.
So we, can we explain to these folks if there's a water leak that their motorhome or whatever this rig is is gonna be pushed out of the way with a loader?
So I had a conversation with her and told her that she is parking on water lines and that's a major issue. And I know, Don, you did too, um, because I think we both did on the same day. Um, so I don't know what her conversation was with Don, but with me it was, you know, I told her, I said, you probably shouldn't be parking there, number one. But, you know, you can't really do it, but I can't tell you no just because there's no ordinance for movable vehicles, unfortunately.
Okay, so we had John ask for it to go on the agenda. I'll let Pat decide on that.
Um, that's a can of worms. Why don't we just send that lady a certified letter that says if there's any water problems, we will use whatever we, of course, we need to move as we can do in our own right of way.
Correct.
Yeah, nicer than that, but something along those lines, at least to where they know that 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 should happen. And then we're coming.
Is that something that I can?
Put it no problem.
Is that something you can do Shayla? I just want, I'm sure we can. I just wanna double check.
Sorry, I missed that. What was question, Jessica?
Well, Pat asked if we can send the person with the RV or motorhome on the right of way that she traveled over. If I can send her a letter and just say, just so you know, if there's a water leak and, you know, no one's there, we're gonna basically push it out of the way so that we can get to the water leak.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay, we can definitely do that then.
What, one other thing, Pat. So when, when you took over as mayor and we all agreed to change the meeting to five thirty, that's when we put that two hour stipulation in that if we get to the two hour point, any counselor could call and say, hey, I'd like to call for a vote to extend it. And the only reason I bring it up is because we did have the conversation and we sometimes become nonproductive after about two hours. So anyway, just something to think about.
Remember what I had for breakfast. Sorry about that, James.
We eat the weekend for dinner, right?
Okay.
Thank you, Tim. Um, I'd just like to add to what Tim said and reinforce what I said is is that we did vote, as Tim said, on the two hour limit and that at the two hours, it was the responsibility of the mayor to terminate the meeting or have a counselor move to continue the meeting and pass that motion to continue the meeting. That way, we wouldn't have this uh, contention. Um, it is the mayor's job to control, run the meeting flow, you know, all of that, as you know. And so being responsible for the two hour termination is normal. Uh, Roberts Rules of Order support that as well, which is something we theoretically, you know, follow to some degree. Anyway, just putting forth that, but thank you, Tim, for standing up for me.
So Pat, Tim, uh, what I'm addressing with that um, right of way deal is the work was done without a right of way permit.
Right.
That's, that's, that's our grounds for some teeth. That's, that's all we have, actually.
But also, the angle would be that it's just a road. It might have rock on it, it might have something parked there, but it's the, I mean. So. But if they have a right of way, we can take it out. So I'd say.
I mean, we had to do a right of way permit for what's her face to plant her flowers in her shrub, okay? So I'm just trying to establish that everybody follows the same rules, go through the permit policies. Then we'd say, no, you can't do a gravel parking area for a forty foot RV because there's a line. You, you know what, that's where I'm going.
Yeah, so the problem is that she didn't file for a right of way permit and that's what we should be calling her on.
Exactly, yes.
But, but the wrench in the spokes is in our ordinances, it says the property owner is responsible for taking care of the right of way. So by putting rock on the right of way, she is taking care of the right of way. Parking the RV on it is a whole different story. But she's maintaining the art, uh, the uh, right of way and that's what our ordinance says we have to do as property owners.
Gotcha, and we can talk about this next month. We got all month to talk about this, so.
Well, come on, we got another hour or so.
I really wanna drag my feet on this one for some reason now, but Jessica, you good?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, her confusion was that she did not understand the point of a right of way. She thought she owned all the way till the street. So when she called me, I was like, oh, no. So that was the whole point. That was her, she had no idea.
Yeah.
Okay, we good for counselors, then? Uh, sorry for wasting all your time. Uh, I will adjourn this meeting at eight thirteen and have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
This conference is no longer being recorded.